So we're going to do the pledge of allegiance. Everybody stand, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Sir Albig Zach. Yes, it is, and there is no spotlight. So we have correspondence and board activities that we will be starting with. And I don't know if you want to comment on any of these, Joe. We have early dismissal.
That went well.
Okay. Athletic budget committee?
That went well. Had three parents show up. It was a nice discussion.
Special Ed budget committee?
The special Ed budget committee went well. We had one parent and three instructional staff members that came to the meetings.
Okay. The Ferrera Frayorrenta school law briefing?
Yeah, I attended that. Wrong meeting. And covered student safety, basically firearms on school grounds, of the relationship between SROs, safety plans, red flag laws, threats to safety done by staff and students. I think the two biggest things coming out of it was the agreements and the changes in the law that I believe went into effect the end of August, I think, where the agreements need to be in the safety plan and develop the stakeholder input, and this needs to be done on an annual basis. And the other thing, which I think RJ will probably talk about a little bit tonight, is the cybersecurity of the education law 2D, which we also heard at the summer law conference. It's a big thing, protecting us with proper notifications and contracts and how it applies to apps, too. So we may hear more about that tonight. But those are the two biggest things coming out of there.
Yeah, okay, thanks. Board of Ed handbook committee, Matt, did you want to?
I can comment. We've, I can hit both line items on there, huh? We've met a couple times. We are in the process of developing a handbook that will be useful for all board members, especially new board members. We've read some handbooks from other districts. We are in the process. We're plugging along, getting some content put together, and are on track, I think, to have a handbook by the end of the year. We'll bring that to the whole board, you know, once we get a draft written.
Anything else? Thanks, Matt. Diversity committee, Dave, did you want to?
Yeah, the diversity committee, we just wrapped up our final meeting. I think we are going to schedule one more meeting, just to kind of bring some things to a closure, because we're currently, as a group, working on completing a mission statement and finalizing some goals to bring to the board at some point in the near future. The hope was to bring that stuff to the board in the second meeting in January. But we, you know, there's a lot of good work done by the committee and follow-up conversations I've been having with committee members after, you know, the concern, not concern, but the questions are really towards ensuring that we can continue to have these conversations and start to implement some things moving forward to support our students, our staff, and our community.
Thanks. Tiffany, you already reported on first, okay. Transportation budget committee?
We met, and none of our volunteers showed up, so it was a short meeting.
I guess so.
Just being honest.
The superintendent's informal evaluation has been postponed, and I think that's, did I cover everything? Anybody have anything else to add? So moving on.
Let me just make a note, we had some very good concerts recently, so I was able to attend a couple, and I'm sure other people were, but always enjoy seeing those things.
Thanks, Matt. We have the student board report.
All right, so Positivity Project at Baker right now is in the middle of the 12 Days of Holiday Cheer. We've had many students volunteer for activities such as hanging up snowflakes, putting positive messages in the bathrooms, and even freezing our butts off in the cold welcoming students into the school. The 12 Days of Holiday Cheer has really introduced Positivity Project to a lot of students, and it's been really nice to see everyone get together and get involved through Positivity Project. I'm also starting to discuss communicating with a student at Dirgie with Mr. Frer, so to connect with a student to help get some of Dirgie's events and some of the things going on in Dirgie through me to the board, which is exciting. Additionally, Spirit Week is coming, we're actually currently in Spirit Week at the high school. I know tomorrow, I believe, is Cringey Family Flannel Day, which is exciting, and kids really get into it for Spirit Week, and it really helps boost morale and gets everyone excited for the holidays. Additionally, plans are underway for our Wellness Day. Our Wellness Day this year is also going to be paired with an additional pep rally to help feature some sports that aren't from the fall, which is also exciting. Mrs. Foote does a really great job with Wellness Day, and so does the student council. And additionally, Mr. Dent and other administrators at Baker have been working on developing the schedule for next year. They have brought in teacher input and student input to develop a new schedule, as right now, we all know that we're in the temporary schedule. So it seems like it's going to have a nine-period schedule as usual, but now there's going to be a new period that is universal for all students and teachers, so students can get to any teacher throughout the day to communicate their needs, which is really, really exciting, and I'm glad that they're adding it. And that's pretty much all we have for the December report, so thank you.
It's very informative. It's nice to have those reports. Request to speak, Jamie?
The Hernan.
Okay, sounds good to me. Consent agenda? I need a motion to approve the consent agenda. Jeff, Jim, any questions?
I didn't have a question. I just had a comment or maybe an observation. You know, I realize the importance when we're looking at the transfers and things like that of, you know, really acknowledging what we're spending per student, per building, and I just want to acknowledge the additional work that, or burden that puts on the business office to really keep track, because that's a fluid process. We see teachers moving from building to building, and I just want to acknowledge how much additional work that puts on the business office and how much they're doing to keep track of those things.
Yep, you're right, Matt. Yep.
I just have two things. On the transfers, Jamie or Tiffany, on number nine, it says teaching staff moving between buildings causes a negative, and is there a change in building or grade level? Because it's going from Eldon K3 to Eldon Grade 4 or 5, but the explanation is between buildings or is it within buildings?
No, the K3 is just where I had some money.
Okay.
Okay, so I'm moving fund balance around just to match it. But we do have, this is our first major set of transfers. That's why you see many large ones, and it's usually because when we do our estimate, it's based on the student population and the classes at the time, and then if you have a school that loses a grade because the population isn't there the following September, and then you have another school that does, we just move the teacher. But if, so if I have a teacher who has more seniority, they're going to make more money than the person, you know, that we budgeted for before. So sometimes that happens. Sometimes they swap between two buildings. I'd have to go find exactly who it was, but that's why the $6,000 is in there.
But this would just be the change between, it's the same building, you just budget K3 and then 4 or 5 separately?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. That's one of those things we have to do under ESSAs, split all this stuff out. You got a second one?
Yeah, in the minutes, it said, we just need to make a correction for the public hearing that was in the minutes, I think it said September 19th, but the meeting was actually on the 16th of September.
Right, okay, we can look at that.
And I just have a question about process. Is it normal to approve something prior to a public hearing, or did things get messed up with some of the changes that I learned about at that workshop that I just attended?
We didn't realize at the time that you had to have a public hearing to approve that we did what we did. You have to have a public comment hearing, but you have to have a public comment meeting, all right, which is what the public hearing was, and I talked to people at SED, just said, well, follow it up. We've already made our submittal, because they have to do the submittal by October 15th or something before we could have a hearing, so there wasn't enough, there wasn't a meeting, so we had to postpone, push it off. So they said, as soon as you have your meeting, then report that to SED on the survey, and you'll be legal that you did all the requirements to do that, on the safety plan. So next year, when we do that, we'll know that there's a requirement before we submit the safety plan that in September. The problem is, you don't really wait, the building, all the building safety teams come back together in September, so then you have those meetings, and you set the building safety plan, and then you have to submit them to SED. It all happened so fast. You know, we'll try to do it at the beginning of October next year, so it's closer to the date that we submit. But we're just catching up. That's absolutely correct.
Yeah, because they mentioned a lot about the change in dates with the new law. There's a September 1st and a October 1st, and you have to have the 30 days exactly as you're talking about, which makes it seem like the committees are going to have to meet sometime during the summer before the end of the school year now. They said everything's being pushed back, because one of the dates was October 15th.
Right. So those kind of things were just overtaken by events. It's almost impossible to get everybody together in the summer. They're doing training, people on vacations, all this kind. Now, we did get the plan done in time, and we did submit the plan, and those are all in place, and we just forgot to have our public hearing, and you noticed the wide interest there was in the hearing, because there was nobody here. So this is, but we had to cross that T, because it's one of the requirements.
Any other questions? All of us in favor? Opposed? Carrie, 8-0?
Joan. So we just want to, at this time, on behalf of Superintendent McDonald, the rest of the leadership cabinet, and the board, we'd like to introduce, and we're excited to have Lori Turton. If she could stand up. She's going to be the new assistant principal at Dirgie Junior High School. She will start with us the first day of the second semester, so congratulations, Lori.
Yes. So moving on, we're on to the leadership report.
And we're going to start first with the mentoring program overview, so I'm going to have Carrie Lamachia and some students and staff come up, and Carrie will introduce them.
So I have Brandy Dixon and Meredith Riggs have been working really hard on the mentoring program. If you remember, we piloted this last year in January, and we've expanded it this year, and we have some students that are really excited to talk to a little bit about their experiences with that. So I'm going to have Brandy take over. They've been working with our elementary social workers to get the program up and running.
Hi, guys. So like Carrie said, Meredith and I have been working on this since last year. This year, we did expand the program to two days a week. Last spring, we started with just one day a week, so our mentors are currently going Tuesdays and Wednesdays to the elementary school. I'd like to thank all of them for coming tonight, and their parents, and the staff and administrators that really helped support this program. So I'm going to turn it over to them. I'm going to introduce our mentors. So this is Jordan Grady, who you guys all know, because she's, of course, our student representative on the board. This is CJ Roseek. This is Megan App from the high school. And then we also have Kristen Fabry, who's here to help with our Van Buren students tonight. So we have Riley and Lenore, and they're going to kind of take it from here and go through what they, how they feel the mentoring program is going.
I've been a part of the mentoring program for the past two years, and there's a reason I came back. Now, going into it was very different, because as, I used to be a camp counselor, but now I was in a different role. I wasn't there to be necessarily fun. I was there to help with math. And it was really rough, but it gave me a lot of experience working with kids, which I know is going to be super helpful down the road going into education. Additionally, like the connections you make with these kids is amazing, and it's inspiring. I have around like seven different drawings of me with purple hair, like in a folder somewhere, and I get, on average, five hugs when I walk into a classroom. And if that doesn't just inspire you to keep doing what you're doing and making a difference for these kids, I don't know what else would. It's been an amazing experience. It's been fulfilling, and I know that it's been well-received by the staff at the schools and the kids, and everyone's always excited when Tuesday and Wednesday roll around, or for me, it's Wednesday and Thursday, because it's a lot of fun. We get things done, and I'm really glad that they added this program.
Yeah, so I agree. I've been doing this for two years, and when I walk in, these kids, they're used to doing English, so they're quiet, but I always hear whispers as I walk in of, oh my God, CJ's here, oh my God, he's here, he's here. And I have to look at them, guys, guys, quiet, you're supposed to be reading, you're supposed to be writing your essay. But I can tell that they're all excited that I'm there, and I'm excited to be there, because it's a lot of fun to help them. And that's just in the beginning, and then afterwards, I could get to go out to recess with them, and they all liked that, because I play soccer with them, and it's really fun for all of us.
So we have some questions for the elementary kids. So our first question is, what is your favorite thing about having a mentor?
My favorite thing about having a mentor is that they always walk around and help you out when you need it.
I agree with what Riley said. They also don't just focus on one student, but more. Like, I know some teachers are there to help one student or a couple, but they would walk around and help more than just one student.
All right. What do you look forward to the most when your mentor comes in?
When they help us with our work, because sometimes some teachers have to do other stuff, and then you just get really stuck on your work, but then when the mentor comes in, they can help you.
Probably helping us work with partners.
All right. And the last question is, how has it helped your work?
It's helped my work, because sometimes in science, we get really confused, and then when our mentor comes in, she, she can help us, and she makes it right.
During our experiments, she helps us with our measurements and making sure we're doing the experiment right, for nothing fails or goes wrong. And when we have partners, she focuses on both of us when we're trying to work together.
All right. Do you guys want to add anything else? I think that's it.
And next, we're going to move on to the school counseling update. So we have Carrie and three of our school counselors, Meredith Ambrose, Heidi Dwyer, and Sean McMahon.
Good evening. I'm Meredith Ambrose, and one of the counselors at the high school. And who has the, yep, slide, okay. And if we could, thank you. Where's the keyboard? All right. So we're just going to go over the guidance plan and talk about the changes that have been, you know, recommended and implemented. So this is a chart that we showed last year in the spring, and we went over. The blue sections indicate the old regulations, and the highlighted green sections indicate the new regulations. And after reviewing the changes, it was determined that grades eight, six through eight, needed the most updating. Two of the biggest changes with the new regulations are that information on colleges and careers needs to be provided in K through 12, and that a core curriculum needs to be developed and implemented by the school counselors in K through 12. And the following slides will show what steps were taken this past year and what steps will be taken next year to ensure that the new regulations are followed.
During the 2018-19 school year, the district took two steps to address the changing regulations for school counseling and guidance programming. One step taken was the decision to move a school counselor from Dirgie Junior High School to Ray Middle School. A gap in service was identified, requiring more individual support for students at the middle school level from a certified school counselor. The second step addressed the regulation to create a K-12 comprehensive school counseling and guidance program. School counselors, social workers, and administrators from our elementary, middle, junior, and senior high school worked together to create a cohesive K-12 counseling plan. The new district plan corresponds with the updated state regulations. Prior to the formation of this committee, each individual school created and implemented their own building counseling plan.
Okay. Well, the counseling plan reviews, has been reviewed regularly at district level and building levels. Mental wellness committee will serve as advisory council and review plan annually, developing curriculum five, or K through five. Those are our action steps.
So part of developing the curriculum, that's sort of the biggest gap in grades K through five, and we don't have a counselor at the elementary level, so similar to the social emotional benchmarks the state put out, saying that we had to come up with a plan to implement those. We worked with the curriculum department to, and our social workers, and our grade-level teachers to write curriculum, and then we talked about how we were going to address that. So in February, we're, we'll be taking one of the counselors and meeting with our library and media specialists and grade-level representatives, using the state standards and career development, and looking at what ways we already hit some of those bullets, and how we can fill in the gaps based on the standards that the state's recommending. So that's our plan to kind of move forward with the biggest gaps that we had in the regulations. I can say that Heidi, Tiffany Stubman, and I also went to the NISCA conference recently, and I attended all of the workshops that were on the comprehensive guidance that the state has put out, and many of the school districts in the region are also struggling with how to meet some of these elements that they've recommended, because obviously, you're not going to hire five counselors in one year. So every school district's a little bit different. We have social workers, psychologists, and counselors, and we're working to fill in the gaps the best that we can with a combination of all of those staff. Does anyone have any questions?
So, oh, did I cut somebody off? Oh, okay. I just had, yeah, I mean, it sounds like, you know, kind of going through this process, you've identified staffing being one of the challenges, it sounds to me like. I mean, what, what kind of challenges can we be aware of that, you know, you guys are seeing coming as a result of this, or coming down, coming down on you guys, because you've got a heavy lift here, so. And I know I'm putting you on the spot, so if you need to get back to us on that, then that's perfectly fine.
I would say that for Dirgie Junior High School, personally, losing Heidi Dwyer, who was a big resource for our office, everybody has their own unique skills, and, you know, we formed a pretty strong office as far as delineating, you know, who did what in our office. So I know that the need, as we said earlier, was identified as, you know, a middle school level needing more school counseling support, so I understand why that that occurred. But that transition of going from 220 students to 290 students was, is significant, and trying to reach all those students, it's, you know, so I know the last time I came, the question came up about data. So we have done a lot of work in that area, identifying the needs of when students come in, one, recording everyone who comes in the office, and then on my schedule, it's color-coded. Is this a parent conference? Is this an academic concern? Is this a mental health concern? So we've done a lot to kind of address where are the needs of our students and our parents. So that input, the last time we were here, was beneficial. But it's been a challenge, just the volume, I would say, at our building. But, you know, we're working it out. We have a lot of resources. I do think the comprehensive, getting everybody from K to 12 on the same plan. The one thing that I would say, again, for our office, I know this probably won't be popular, but it's what I feel, is when you lose, you know, a counselor in our office, and you increase by 80 students, when you get to summer work, the student, the parents are still there, right? So what used to take our office, we've lost almost 30 days of counseling time in the summer to help support everything from doing the master schedule, to having parents that are transferring, to having students with disabilities come into our building and give them private tours, to help that transition. So it's not so much that I'm looking for more money, but I would say that that is a factor. When you go from 17 days to 13 days, and then when you pull a counselor out of the office, there, there is an impact. But again, we do the best that we can. We have a great administrative team. We get together on a regular basis. We try to figure out what those needs are. So I would say that that's been our biggest challenge personally.
So you mentioned a number, 290 students per counselor?
I think mine is 285, but it's written that.
So as we consider like next year's budget, what's kind of an ideal number? Where would the sweet spot be for the number of?
Again, I, you know, I think that it's, you know, I would defer that to the district office, you know, personnel. You know, I would say that if it stays the same, to do, like the CTE, you know, that was a new mandate, you know, that, that we had to look at this, this summer, and we've kind of like working it out. So I think we're in a good place now, but I don't have an exact number for you.
What was the number before?
I was right around 220.
Okay.
Again, going back to the data and stuff, you know, that we said that we look at, you know, we see, and I think in the month of September was just under 1,000 students in our office. In the month of October, again, being down a counselor, it was about 840. The reason for that difference, we see every new eighth-grade student and every new transfer, so that kind of skews it a little bit higher. But we typically see somewhere around 15 students individually, you know, every single day. So I would defer to the district office about what the, what the number would be, but I would say give us more support in the summer would be nice.
So the, the months that you're not full, you know, full-time, the summer months, that additional caseload is a burden? And then the additional caseload is a burden all year long, but it, you know, you feel it a little bit more there as well? Is that what I'm hearing?
I would say that that's, that's accurate. You know, because it's, in the summer, it's, you think you have a lot of time, but it goes quickly. You know, so it goes from, you know, getting the master schedule up, to getting the students right, to, you know, getting it out to parents, to rectify, and that's, that's just the standard. That's not the additional things that we do. So I would say that that, you're 100% correct.
And by, and by being conscious of that caseload, that helps the relationship building and some of those things?
I would say that all of us, I would say that that is the number-one thing, especially with the kids transitioning in between the buildings, developing that rapport on the early stage where, you know, we're seen as school counselors, as someone to go to if they need help, is a big plus. And I, again, I know that we all go in additional days, so it's not, you know, I have X number of days and we don't come in.
Right, right.
But it is, has been a little bit of a challenge.
And then the last thing that I think that I'm hearing is that, just like educationally, each building has its own unique needs and kind of atmosphere, the counseling office per building kind of has some unique needs as well. That's, that's kind of what I, what I've heard. Is that accurate?
I don't want to speak for the other two buildings. I would say that our, our building has definitely its own unique personality there, but I would say that there's varying needs, you know, at the high school level, you know, students looking at going off to college. students looking at going off to college. I think our students are more that immediate, you know, kind of, you know, they're upset with their friend or, you know, that, you know, the academics. So I do think each individual building certainly has hallmarks of, of student issues or student concerns and parent concerns as well.
Yeah. Well, yeah, I just want to acknowledge, I appreciate all the work that you've done on creating that comprehensive plan and appreciate the feedback as well.
Thank you.
I just want to make sure I understand. So the comprehensive plan has been developed?
Yes, and it's accessible online as well.
And then there's a requirement that you present outcomes to the Board of Education? It says here, annual program outcomes report to Board of Education. So when do you plan to do that?
So part of the new plan on this last slide is talking about an advisory council, where the advisory council looks at the data, reviews the plan, and looks at outcomes. And it says data, but it's actually like sort of a check sheet that you go through the state mandates it. And so this is part of one of the gaps that we hadn't done in the past. When you look at the recommendations for the advisory council, it's all, pretty much all of the same people we have on the Mental Wellness Committee. It's board members, parents, students, teachers, support staff. So we thought we, we had talked about it at Mental Wellness Planning, that we would bring it to the Mental Wellness Committee in January. They will leave with it, review it, and bring feedback. They'll get that outcome summary to take with them and bring it back in March, and we'll have feedback from that. And so then, when we have that information, that would be available to come back and bring to you or perhaps do next year, because obviously it's a pretty, it's a pretty comprehensive project, so.
I just have one question and comment. First of all, I want to say that I attended the eighth grade planning night, and the counseling staff at Dirky did a phenomenal job because it's a big transition, and I've already sent Lori an email about that, and I probably should have copied TJ on that, and Joe, sorry about that. But I did it as a parent, not as a board member. You guys did a great job explaining, and it is pretty exciting, the opportunities that kids are going to have going forward, and more choice that they have, and explaining a lot of those things like the differences between credit bearing, weight bearing, excuse me, weight bearing, non-weight bearing. There was some confusion between AP honors and seller, all that stuff. You know those questions? I know that, because my son's in eighth grade, he's going to be scheduled for, scheduling for next year, and I hear you say that you have about 65 more additional students, and knowing that that needs to be done by a certain time, so do the administrators know how to staff? How do you balance that with all the needs that the students have outside of scheduling, and how are you going to manage all of that?
First, I'd say, you know, thank you for coming to the, the parent night the other day. You had some great suggestions, and I, I don't know if you noticed, but I did update the art, so I, I, okay. What I would say is that one of the things that the district has definitely done, and I think it's especially reading the, you know, the Syracuse.com, has done a lot with mental health. So although we lost Heidi, and that is, that's definitely a loss to our building, they did give us a social worker, which we haven't had before. Lauren Hibbert's our school social worker, and she does a great job. So she helps quite a bit day-to-day in handling some more of the social, mental health type of issues. So that's been a huge resource. Having Liberty Resources, which our district, I think, has been the forefront four for years, has been a big plus. How I think most of the counselors handle it, we schedule the, you know, the parent conference. We allow parents that opportunity to come in, which is, I think, unique to other districts that just schedule without parent input, but we give parents that opportunity to come in. I typically will meet with students or parents the first 20 minutes of a period, which allows me then to have the last 10, 15 minutes for a student that, you know, needs to see me. We also kind of stagger our students so that not all three counselors are scheduling at the same time, so that if there is a crisis or there is something, that one of the counselors is available to meet with that student at that time. So we, we do our best. It does kind of back up in our office sometimes, but, but we do try to, to spread that out to make sure that we do address the student's needs. But I would say the addition of the social worker has been a, a big blessing for our building.
Good? Thank you, guys. Nice job.
Thank you.
So we will move on to our learning coach, professional development update. We have Tony Renee and our three learning coaches here. We'll let them introduce themselves in a moment. On the screen, you'll see the different roles that they play in the district, really important roles, and they're each going to go through and talk about the, some of the highlights of what they've been working on.
So as you can see, we work with teachers in many different capacities. We are lucky enough to work with such skilled teachers that are always seeking and always wanting to grow professionally. If you can just go to the next slide. Oh, sorry, I didn't introduce myself. I'm Julie Jones Beckwith, sorry about that. So a primary focus for me has been the, with the reading block, K six. And it starts with reading workshop, and, which is just a predictable framework for teachers and students, and how to structure the ELA block. It begins with a whole group lesson, which allows for teachers to meet the needs of the class, and then moves into small group instruction, independent practice, and conferring with readers. Another area has been phonological awareness and phonics, continued support with K two with the Wilson Foundations Program that we have, and just the foundational pieces of reading. The last piece has been that I do support the reading RTI teachers. Over the summer, they worked on, we worked on creating an assessment handbook, therefore to have assessments that are consistent throughout the district. PD was offered in all of these areas over the summer, so the support has continued this year, and then during the school day, and then through after-school PD as well.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Kate McMahon. This is my second year at Baldensville as a learning coach. It's a pleasure to be here. My main focus over the past year and a half has been implementing math workshop. And math workshop, really, we're trying to really implement the mind frame that it's a philosophy where we have open-ended tasks, and there's multiple access points for students, and we really want students to have discourse and ownership of their learning. We want it to be an environment where they have a growth mindset, and they're okay and feel free to take risks. We want, the teachers are working on differentiated and individualized group instruction. We've also been working on the word problem protocol. This is a protocol which students work with their peers on a higher-level task that has many access points. They collaborate and use discourse to discuss, many strategies can be used, and then they work together to give feedback to their peers based on a student-created rubric, and then they have time to reflect and revise and make a goal for the next time they do the protocol. We're also working on building conceptual understanding and fluency, and I've done a lot of work with the math RTI staff, just setting goals, progress monitoring, identifying skill gaps, and how we can support our students. Thank you.
Hello, everyone. So I know most of you, but I'm Eric Ziegler. I'm going to give you some updates on our secondary crew. So I work mainly with the STEM areas. So this first slide up here, as you all know, we've been transitioning into the three-dimensional standards for science, and really incorporating the science and engineering practices, which we have eight of them, and cross-cutting concepts. And this is really highlighting one of those science and engineering practices that we've been working really diligently on this year, and that's constructing high-level explanations using a framework called claims, evidence, and reasoning. The big thing here is really the disconnect on the reasoning with scientific principles, coming back to what they're claiming. They're really good at coming up with evidence, coming up with data tables, looking at graphs, but really what we really want them to do is go back to their models, in this case, which is another science and engineering practice, and really marry the model to the explanation, really go back to the science, really go back to the principles and understanding in the content. So you're really learning the science content through bringing in these eight science and engineering practices and, and cross-cutting concepts, and just to throw one out, patterns or stability and structure and function. So that's the big highlight on, on science right now, is really we're working on incorporating K-12 at this point with Project Lead the Way in Smithsonian Science and constructing curriculum in, in our area of science. The next area, building off of some of that summer PD that we were talking about, I worked with all of our secondary math and continue working with the, the math crew, seven, 12. This PD highlighted some of the national conference that we went to in San Diego, along with integrating technology. A lot of you know my other role prior to becoming a learning coach as an instructional tech specialist. We wanted to highlight some of that Chromebook integration that we're seeing everywhere, and this really is a, a great website. It used to be a graphing calculator only, but if you're familiar with Desmos, Desmos really upped their game. And this one shows something called snapshots. So another thing that I've been studying, and it kind of echoes what Kate was saying, is really we want them to do productive discourse, and it's not all about the technology. Teachers need to pause and reflect and have the kids use instructional accountable talk moves. So this Desmos activity snapshots allow Peg Smith, which she writes a book called Five Practices for Productive Discourse, really allows our teachers to select certain students and sequence them in proper ways to showcase all of the different strategies they might be taking to solve an equation, to solve an authentic, relevant problem that we really want them to engage in. So snapshots is a really good digital platform to allow all of the work to be displayed for the teacher, and then them to kind of reflect and monitor to say, I really like what Eric's doing, I really like what Kate's doing, I really like what Julie's doing, and then talk about it with the group. So it's, it's a great tool. This next one is also a Desmos activity, but I wanted to highlight some of the instructional routines that we're doing in math. In secondary math, where you only have 40 minutes, we really want that math talk, that reasoning, to come out and solve problems, and we want to hear the student thinking. So in this case, we're looking at open strategies, open middle, allowing them to solve different ways and to talk about that. But this is an activity called Polygraph, and Polygraph is a partner-based activity where students will pair up either anonymously, as the teacher can set in the platform, or the kids will know one another in the platform, and it's almost like 20 questions. So if you can see that up there, you have quadratic equations or functions, you have all those different graphs, and the kids have to come up with really good questions, and their partner has to ask and eliminate what those graphs are telling them, eliminating it all the way down to one using mathematical vocabulary to figure out what's going on there. So we're working on those eight mathematical practices at this point of reasoning, attending to precision, really looking at solving problems with, you know, in a fun, authentic nature. So that's some of the highlights in secondary. This last slide that we'll conclude with is some of the 2018, 19 data that we were looking at, and we're just going to kind of go around the table here.
So our summer, over our summer PD, we were able to go back and get all of our rosters. We had 363 participants over the summer between the three of us with all the PD that was offered.
And for after-school professional learning, we designed this based on teacher need and request, as well as some follow-up from the summer. We had 185 participants in 2018, 2019.
And then that last part of the data table, I changed it up a little bit. It says participants and then interactions. And interactions can be anything, this is job embedded coaching, what we do on a daily basis. So we're at leadership meetings and BOCs, that could be an interaction. So that could be 12 people with us, and we count that as an interaction. Other ways that we do a job embedded coaching is one-on-one coaching cycle. So that's, one interaction could be one person. So how we did this, we took a look at our calendars for 10 months, and we took that look at all these different types of interactions that we did within a month and averaged it. Over those 10 months, we hit about 20 interactions or more, that's why you see the 600-plus, or more, and then multiplied by 10 months. So you get about 200 per coach sitting here. So that's how we come up with that 600-plus interactions. But again, just to kind of talk a little bit about that, a coaching cycle could look differently with different people. If we come in, that could look like a planning, that can look like a modeled teaching event, where we kind of go in and one of the teachers that we're working with set a mini-goal, and they were going to say that we need engagement strategies. And we might come in and we might model something really quickly, and then have them and release them with us in the room, you know, through that coaching cycle, always reflecting, always talking about how to get better. So that job embedded coaching, I really think is kind of a real big highlight for us, where we're constantly talking to teachers in the, in the schools that we're working in. So that's us, that's our update in a nutshell. Any questions, guys?
So it seems like that, it seems like you're very busy, and I'm so glad that our teachers have this internal resource to be able to rely on. How many teachers do we have that work in Baldensville?
400.
So you're, so you're reaching almost all of them with what you're doing? Is that what I'm seeing here?
So in different capacities, right. So depending on, so I work K-12 for science, K-12 for instructional technology, seven, 12 for learning coach, math, and other content areas. So it all depends on, you know, the different goals that teachers are setting. So those interactions are also important to kind of note, because sometimes it'll be a PLC or a data team meeting. So we're seeing the whole, whole entire grade level all at once, as opposed to an individual teacher that I might be working. We mentioned going to math leadership meetings and social studies leadership meetings and things like that, where we're embedded in a leadership in the morning, but then we take our team of Beville teachers, and then we're also working with those teachers in the afternoon. So again, it's, it's, it's large amounts of teachers at that point. To, to kind of put a number on how many?
And also, just as a reminder, you know, we have three coaches in front of us. So one coach, Tanya Buddha, went back into the classroom this year, and we've been searching for a new coach. So that has been advertised, it's going to be out again in January. So we are down a coach, but still seeing a lot of teachers and supporting a lot of teachers.
I'm just curious, well, more than curious, related to the impact, I would imagine the reason we do this is to make better teachers, which then in turn helps students excel. So have you thought about how to see whether there's a relationship between what you're doing and performance in the classroom?
I mean, I think, I mean, that's the question that's asked of us every year. I'm not really sure how to track it in that way, other than to say more teachers are seeking that support and challenging themselves professionally, where if I, if I go back to when the coaches first started, it was very difficult to, to get this going and moving in the district, and, and they really have worked hard to, to form that. So to say, I can say, you know, because Julie worked with, you know, me as a teacher, that my kids did better, I mean, we're not track, it's a very confidential relationship, so they're not even sharing with us who they're working with. It's a confidential relationship between the coach and the teacher. But what we do see is knowing that our teachers are probably, at least I, you know, more in line, more together in their instruction, you know, during our department meetings or grade level meetings, we're, we're seeing that same common language used, and that's the direction I know we want to go. direction I know we want to go for our students, is to not have them have, you know, they could have different approaches in each room, you know, the teacher, all have their own craft, but to have that same core instruction, the same best teaching practices from room to room, that I know we see through our observations and other administrators who are doing their observations, you know, I think Building Principles would be the first to say they see a more consistent delivery of instruction than we've had before.
Well, that's something, and I think, you know, related to the math, for example. If students are actually able to do what you've taught the teacher to do, or what you've coached the teacher to do, then that's something as well. And so then does that translate to more facility on, you know, math assignments, or taking a higher level math, or that kind? So I think it's possible, you know, you may not be able to show that this is the only thing that contributed, but I think you've got a really great story to tell.
Yes.
I think it's always aligned to our mission and vision, right? Anytime that we sit with teachers, we're always talking about goal-setting, right? And if that goal-setting is not aligned, then as a coach, we always talk about, well, how can we make this a little bit tighter with the alignment to, you know, get to the end of the unit, get to a region's exam, you know, get to a state level exam. So it's always about achievement. But on the flip side of stuff, you know, in Beville, we have a lot of great things going on, and sometimes it's about creativity, innovation, you know, that kind of things that we want to push the teacher and get them to reflect on as well, and get them out of their comfort zone to see what they can do with the kids. So, you know, there's that balance, though.
And I think our main capacity, I think what we really strive to do is empower teachers so they can empower students. So I think that kind of sums up why we do what we do in a nutshell. And I, me just being the second-year coach here, it's been incredibly inspiring to see some of the changes in both teachers and students that I've worked with, and I've learned such a great deal from the teachers as well. So I think that that is definitely why we do it.
So, and Joe, I should probably ask you this question as well, but talk to me a little bit about classroom supporter and resource provider, because one of the things that I've heard is that I know how to teach my kids, or I think I know how to teach my kids, but I'm having major behavioral issues in my classroom. I'm having just behavior management issues. So how do you guys, or are you asked to provide resources to go in and say, oh, let me teach this lesson today to see, because I can't keep control of my classroom? So are those some of the things that you're also being asked to participate in and provide guidance and support?
Yeah, definitely. So it's not just content and instruction, right? So, you know, and we have a bunch of protocols that we rely on. You know, we go to just instructional coaching seminars and workshops. So, you know, it could be even time on task. So I can kind of go in and even, you know, talk about how many times that I saw kids off-task, and it could be just simple, within a 40-minute period, I saw X amount of time that could have been tightened up, right? And that's just one example, right?
You saw how it could be tightened up, but are you providing the resources to say this is how I think you can?
Yeah.
Yeah, and just to piggyback off that, I think that a lot of it is building the relationship with the teacher, so they trust us, and then really empowering them to build the relationships with the students and give tools in order to have everyone successful. And sometimes it's on a team level or an individual level, and, but I think our main focus is building and maintaining relationships with the teachers and then with the students.
Eric, for the, I watched the video for the Desmos, and it's phenomenal, and it takes me back to the first technology committee meeting I went to where one of the requests was learning how to integrate technology into the classroom. Or have the math teachers been trained in this, or, I mean, I imagine you don't require everyone to use it, some teachers aren't comfortable with technology yet, but are they using this because one of the things Joe had mentioned earlier in the year was just having these math discussions, because it's one thing for kids to memorize the steps, but to actually have the discussions to understand what they're doing and how it applies to everyday life? And is this able to, have you seen some improvements in that area with this?
Yeah, so Jennifer, Kate and I, you know, with K-12 math instruction, we talk about accountable talk, how you get the kids to talk and reason through, we call it low-floor, high-ceiling tasks, where there's equitable access for all kids to get into a problem and really start to talk about that reasoning. The digital piece is just one entity of what we do in math at this point, but again, of course, Desmos being the highlight there, that was a piggyback of some frameworks that I already have been training on for the last couple years, and that's the SAMR model and the T-PAC model of technology integration. I'm reading another book, and there's going to be four PDs, two for secondary and two for elementary staff, starting in January, on something called a T3 framework, which builds off of the SAMR model and the T-PAC model, to get our teachers really comfortable at going from transformational to transcending integration of technology. And again, what comes, another point to kind of piggyback what you said, is really getting a teacher comfortable with the technology integration, because we have a lot of it in Beville, right? So using it and using it in ways that are going to get the most bang for our buck in terms of instruction is one of my really big goals with teachers when I still talk K-12 instructional tech.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you very much. Awesome job.
Thank you. Have a great night.
Next, we have folks from Johnson Controls here to provide us with an update on our energy performance contract.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Jerry Alloway. I'm an energy performance consultant for Johnson Controls. I've been with the company for about 12 years. I want to thank Jamie for asking us to come present this report, and the board for listening to it. My colleague here is Dave Angelo. Why don't you say what you do, Dave?
Yeah, I'm a Senior Business Development Director for Johnson Controls. I've been at Johnson for 26 years.
So anyway. The presentation tonight, if we look at the next slide here, there's a lot of information, and I'm going to apologize in advance, there's some pie charts here, but we're not going to, we're not going to go through all the numbers. The whole point here is that we think that the energy performance contract that we did with the district was very successful, and it went very well. The district facilities, folks, administration was very easy to work with, things went well. The net result was very positive. So again, the bottom line, high-level result was very positive. So I'm going to start with giving a little bit of project background, going through some of these quickly. If you have any questions during the course of this, please stop me, because I know how we can get involved and really dig down into the weeds here, but I just want to give you some highlights. So on this first slide, just some background, we have the contract that was signed in July 2015, the contract term is for 18 years. The installation period is roughly for eight months, November 17 through July, June 2018, and the guaranteed, first year of the guaranteed start date was July 1st, 2018 through June 2019. That's the fiscal year of the school. The body of the report focuses on this timeframe, okay? Now, this chart to the right, this table to the right, is just, this is a total of for 18 years. Over the course of 18 years, the district is projected to save about $4.5 million. So on this next slide, which would be the one with the pie charts, the key points here, well, the first pie chart is by measure, okay? We have a number of different PHMS. PHMS are Facility Improvement Measures. And you could see from the size of the slices here, lighting was by far the largest measure that we installed. The pie chart to the right is by buildings. So you could see that Baker and Dergie and Ray Middle School were the largest buildings that we did work in. But the key point here, the little table, the bullet points to the left, 90% of what we did focused on electric measures, things like lighting, exterior lighting, computer power management, and not so much on thermal boilers, energy management systems like that. So the focus was that. If we look at the next slide here, this is a, just a section of the guarantee table that's in the contract. The left-hand side of this table where it says guaranteed across the top is actually in the contract. So during the installation period, for instance, there weren't any guaranteed savings. During year one, there were guaranteed savings of $290,000. On the right-hand side of this table is the report period. So you could see for the report period, the different energy savings, the report period energy cost avoidance for the report period was 201,000 versus, for instance, 189,000 for the guaranteed period. The project brought in $193,000 in rebates and incentives to the district alone. And there's, the next slide will go into detail on that. But all in all, between the energy cost avoidance and the operations and maintenance cost avoidance, there was a net positive for the guarantee of about $11,500. The next slide on page seven goes in a little bit more detail about the incentives and the adjustments made. Let me talk about the incentives. I mentioned that there's $193,000 that the district had and received from either NYSERD and/or from National Grid through applications and things that we had approved our calculations to the district and to the vetting organizations. Johnson Controls received about $41,000 for its efforts. The split was 70-30, where the district, anything above the $98,000, $98,000 in rebates were guaranteed. We achieved that, and in addition to that, we achieved $136,000, almost $137,000 extra over above the guarantee of 198. So the district now only got the $98,000, but they also received an additional, about $96,000, which would bring it up to the $193,000, almost $194,000 in incentives. The adjustments are typical for any project. You have a project that's in design, you get into construction, things change, you had a capital project going on at the same time, so there's always adjustments. And in this case, there was only about $6,000 in adjustments, and that's reflected in the guarantee table. On page eight, this is a high-level look at the buildings that were affected by the energy performance contract along the left-hand column, and the PHMS, again, the Facility Improvement Measures along the top row. And wherever you see a shaded area, it just means that that particular school did not receive that measure. And so if you look at the bottom three rows, you could see the total for the report period, you could see what was projected for year one, and the very bottom row, you see the variance between the two. And that $11,000 to the positive, you could see where that came from easily by looking at this slide. All right, so as I mentioned earlier on, this is really, this whole presentation is a synthesis of an 84-page report that Jamie has a copy, and I think all of you have a PDF of. So I wanted to give an example of what is contained in this report, and since lighting was the number-one measure, it had the most savings, this is a detail on lighting. What I want you to look at here, there's really three parts to this table. One is projected annual savings, one is as-built, and one is report year. And the, what is reported as part of the guaranteed cost avoidance is in the report year one. So for lighting, if you look at the bottom right-hand cell of $104,361, that's what was saved in lighting. At the very bottom, you can see a total of 9,869 interior and exterior LED fixtures were installed as part of this project. So for each one of these measures, the detailed table that I presented on the previous page, there's pages that go along in this report that detail what was projected, what was actually saved and reported. And I'm sparing you the going through each and every table for that, but I could assure you that all the information is in the report. Keep in mind that when we evaluate cost avoidance savings and energy savings, it's on a retrofit isolation basis. So in other words, there's a measurement boundary around what we're looking at. So for instance, when we're saying that lighting is saving $104,000, for instance, we're only looking at the lighting system. When we say computer power management saves X number of dollars, or we say water conservation, we're only, it's like we put a boundary around that particular measure and only look at that measure, versus looking at the whole building. But as part of our assessment, we do look at the whole building, which I'm going to get to after the environmental benefits slide, which is the next slide. Environmental benefits, which is becoming even more important as time goes on, schools, municipalities focus on this quite a bit. But per the performance contract, 1.4 million kilowatt hours were saved in, about 13,594 thermes. Again, this, these are numbers from the performance contract, the retrofit isolation, the boundary around the measures that we had effect on. These numbers, as far as pounds of carbon dioxide, pounds of methane, they come from the EPA, the most recent measurements for upstate New York in 2016. The colored bar chart at the bottom, you could hardly read it, but the bottom one is from upstate New York, and I just think this is interesting. Upstate New York actually has a very clean energy generation mix. For instance, 31% of it comes from hydro, 7% comes from non-hydro renewables such as wind, nuclear is 31% as well. If you look at the rest of the nation, which is a top bar chart, you could see about 30% comes from coal. So we actually burn pretty clean here in upstate New York, which is something to be, I think, proud of. All right, so I mentioned, this next slide is actually a synthesis of the slide that follows, and this is really the whole point of the slide that follows. We're not going to go through that big table, but this is where we take a slight departure. Everything I've talked about prior to this point is about retrofit isolation, again, the lighting, the computer power management, the water conservation, and we're looking at things individually. We took a step back, Jamie wanted us to take a step back, and we do this for all of our customers, really, but what are we doing, when we look at a Niagara Mohawk bill or a National Grid bill, what are we doing? Well, how much money are we actually saving? How much energy are we actually saving? So the good news about here is that you're, on the electric side, the district actually saved 1.1 million kilowatt-hours in that first year, June of, July of 18 through June of 19. Spent $302,000 less on electricity. Now, this is due to lower rates and less consumption, so it's a win-win. And keep in mind, the focus of our energy performance contract was 90% electric. On the thermal side, we didn't perform that well when we look at whole buildings. We actually used 63,000 more thermes than we did in the, year one, than we did in the baseline. baseline. Yeah, this is all compared to the baseline. But you spent $107,000 less for those extra thermes than you did in the baseline. What is the reason? Well, you have lower rates, that's why you spent less. But why do we use more thermes? You had 1,100 more heating degree days in year one than you did in the base year. More heating degree days means it's basically a colder year. And these buildings are thermally light, so in other words, it's cold outside, you use more natural gas to heat them. So overall, the district saved $410,000 in, now this is, again, utility bill savings and electric and gas utility costs in report year one than you did in the baseline. This next chart, this is one of those eye charts I was talking about, and we're not going to go through it, just, I'll point out the major components of the chart. The top half is the baseline period, which was May 11, 2011 through April 2013, an average over a two-year period. And the bottom part was the report year one. And we look at electric and electricity, and we look at natural gas. And what's important to us as in energy reporting and consulting, and because the state and national EPA, everyone looks at this, is EUIs, which is Energy Utility Index. And the, if you look at the academic and the non-academic buildings, for the baseline, I'm looking under electric versus the year one, you could see there was a big drop in the electric EUI, which is good. And natural gas, again, as expected, went up because it was colder year. Net-net, if you're looking at the bullet points on the left-hand side, the EUI, which is defined by KBTUs per square foot, it was decreased by about 21% across the district and increased about 23%. Again, there were, it was a colder year. Average cost per square foot in the baseline year was $1.09, and this past year, it was 62 cents. That's quite a drop. Just so you know, K-12 National EUI, Energy Utilization Index, is 77.3. The district school buildings in total are about 54.3. In other words, it's good news. You guys are performing well. All right. So anyway, this next slide has to do with electric savings and whole building, and I just wanted to use Baker as an example here. You see the blue line on top, that's the base year. You see the dotted red line below that. All that area in between the red and the blue line is savings. And for each school, each year, on the following pages, you could see consistently, the red dotted line, the performance in year one was much better than it was in the baseline year. So in each case, savings was prevalent. Skipping through to the last slide, which I think is important, I wanted to talk a little bit about thermal. This is Baker High School, and the blue line was the base year actual consumption. The green line was normalized to the current year, and the red line is current year. You could see that the red line, when you compare it to the green line, there's no real savings. So basically, the district is performing about the same as it did back in 2013, 14, thermally. Electrically, you hit it out of the park. So what does all this mean? And what are our recommendations moving forward? And that's this bulleted chart at the bottom, okay? Sharing this information with other administration, with principals, with facilities people, if they know how they're doing, you can't manage what you don't measure. The school is measuring it now. Share the information. Behavior is very important in saving energy, students as well. Obviously, there could be more of a focus on thermal energy. And how do we do this? If we could, we could look at your energy management system, look at schedules, set points, and take a look at that. Other measures that improve thermal performance could be efficiency with air handling units, top units, boilers, and so on. Consider retrocommissioning. Retrocommissioning basically means go and look at your facility management system and making sure that the commands are commanding the equipment as they're supposed to do by design. And lastly, renewable energy technologies, in particular solar. And Dave, what do you know about solar, what we're doing for Buffalo Public Schools?
No, solar in the last eight months has really taken off, and it really has a lot to do with the Governor's Green New Deal, which is financially putting money behind making the state more sustainable. So solar has a really big play. All of our clients now are incorporating solar, and that's one of the things that we wanted to bring to your attention, is well as you did in reducing your energy consumption, solar can take it down a lot farther. And the nice part is, we've already checked it with State Education Department, and you get state aid for doing it, and the state has a lot of additional incentives to make it work under the 18-year payback that you need for an Energy Performance Contract. So whether you do it through the Energy Performance Contract approach or just looking at it as a standard capital program, it's a really good option to consider.
One of our projects, to piggyback on Dave, Gates Child High School District is putting in solar, and we have a battery-powered backup as well, storage system. So they're producing energy and we're storing it for them. And that's it. Any questions?
So just continuing to think about that, I'm so glad we're becoming more energy efficient, and the idea about solar is intriguing. Jamie, have you done a calculation to figure out how many years of savings we need to pay for what the changes we made? Or is it 18 years, like you mentioned, or?
Well, the interesting thing about this is that we're going to save, it's distorted by the first-year rebates and that kind of stuff. But really, after that, you're still going to be saving a couple hundred thousand dollars of the energy every year for 18 years, which was part of the calculations we went into this. So their calculations that we entered into a contract in the beginning have proved to be true. Now, we're going to have to watch this. We have, we pay for this auditing periodically, and then we can, you know, 10 years in, we could have it done again, those kind of things. We bought so many years of monitoring in our contract. So what this tells us is that this was the right thing to do. Now, the next thing you have, it didn't show here, since I've been here, most of our building projects have really focused on HVAC. So if our base year was 2017, it's going to miss all the work we did before that. So since I've been here, in the decade I've been here, we've replaced, you know, we used to have a single-pipe steam system in the high school, and now it's dual-pipe hot water, brand-new boilers, highly condensing. So that is saving us money there. Depends on the weather, but Ray has all-new air conditioning and boiler and hot water heater. The issue we're going to face is that we have, is we have older building envelopes. Okay? And that really is what, so you've got glass and thermal protection on the walls and things like, and that's going to be part of our Funding the Future discussion, is going to be energy savings as you go forward. You know, if we retrofit a whole building, and we decide to go redo Palmer, say, well, we're going to look at the glass, thermal glass, the surface of it, all those kind of things. Can we change the, how much energy we're losing out the walls and out of the roof? As opposed, it's one thing to have a nice, energy-efficient boiler, but if you have a poor building envelope, you know, we did do a lot of weather stripping and all that kind of stuff in here, but that's kind of around the, now, the reason it's difficult to pay, it's difficult to pay for those things in an EPC. We've always had, our approach here has been to do it in a regular building project. Because you, the payback for a brand-new boiler is like 30 years, not 18. So it doesn't make economic sense to do it that way. And we have looked in the past at the solar energy thing. We got involved about five years ago, looking to put, you know, like a 20-acre solar energy farm, you know, in the district. But I think at the time, even with NYSERDA credits, it's not an economically viable plan unless you have the credits and all that stuff. So, and we were kind of stuck there. The company that was doing it from the West Coast, I didn't think really understood New York State education law and those kind of things. And I think now, in the last five or six years, that whole process has matured a little bit, and people are understanding. I mean, the original proposal was, let's lease some land in Cortland. Well, it's against state law for a district to own property outside of its own borders. So, you know, those basic errors and, you know, because the state is different, and each state has different regulations like that. So I think that as we go forward, we'll have to look at that, about, you know, how long do they last? Who's going to be responsible for them? If you lease them or you own them? All those kind of questions come into play. And then they, you know, they deteriorate 3% or 4% or 5% a year, depends on which one you buy. So after 20 years, are they 100% not working anymore? And then how do you get rid of them? Do you put them on top of a building or on some land you own? So all those things are going to have to be, I think it's worth considering as an ancillary system. I don't think you could power a building off of it, but the technology is getting cheaper than it was five years ago. So I think it definitely is something we need to look at going forward as part of our planning. But I wanted these fellows to come and talk about it. This is one of those success stories, that when you talk about a district heading out to do a project that's focused purely on energy savings, I think we've reached that goal. Another thing you're going to see is, our guys are never going to have to change a ballast. These light bulbs, unless something drastically happens, you know, are going to last, you know, 15, 18 years. So the time, so just think of the cost avoidance, they can spend more time fixing other things or cleaning other things as opposed to doing that. So there's other kind of uncalculable things that go along with. So we don't have a whole, you know, area of our building where you've got light bulbs stacked, and we don't have to get rid of the old light bulbs because they're hazardous waste now. So all these kind of things. So I was happy to have them come, and I started reading their report. I think it's wonderful that that is exactly where we predicted we were going to be at. We did even better. So we're going to save money every year for 18 years. That's why I look at, we need to look at more and more of these kind of things going forward.
I had a question. You know, talking about the renewables and that, and not being really knowledgeable about energy and that kind of thing. I understand where they play a role in, on the electric side. Do they also play a role on the thermal side, where they can help us with some of those issues as well?
Yeah, they can. A lot of schools are, especially in Tompkins County, there's a huge green push going on down there, plus they have a gas moratorium. So a lot of schools and county buildings are looking at geothermal heat pumps, a way to drill into the ground. Down there, it's 495 feet you can go before you have run into special DEC permitting, which is a train wreck. So that's the limit. And that's probably one of the bigger ones, the bigger areas of opportunity for thermal application.
It's really going to be interesting, if you're looking at that report, how terrible the bus garage was, you know, with the cost per square foot. The first thing it went to was, which one's the worst structure? So we built a new bus garage that has the heat in the floor, and, you know, well, we have an 11,000-square-foot bus garage, the new building is 40,000. So it's going to be interesting to see, you know, the heat load and how that works over a span of time, you know, for living in that building for 12 months, to see what those bills are going to look like compared to what we were wasting before, open doors and all. So we have a much more thermally tight building envelope, we have a different kind of boiler. So you get the slab up to a certain temperature and it just loafs. We're going to see how well that works. So I'm kind of, so we're actually going to, like, reduce the use of our worst building.
I got a quick question, just to see if I'm interpreting the table on slide six, the one on, the one-year summary table there.
With the buildings and the FIMs going across?
It's got the one-year summary, number six, slide six. Yeah, right here. So is the interpretation, in year one, we were, our goal was to get to 290 savings, and we hit 403, so we're kind of like 110K ahead of the plan?
Well, no, all right. So, yeah, this section right here, the guaranteed section, was 290, and you're spot on. In report period one, in other words, year one, we hit, my better, can't read it that far away, I gotta look at my glasses.
Me neither.
Yeah, our number was 397, 699. Now, that number includes the 193,000 that we received from rebate. So what I like to do is, I like to look at the energy cost avoidance only. For instance, if you look at the guaranteed energy cost avoidance, about 190,000, we were at 201,000. The others, I mean, rebates, it's a one-time deal. You're not going to get any more rebates unless you do other projects. But the net, the operations and maintenance, it's really a push-through. It's, each year, it doesn't, it's pretty static. So we were about $11,500 above what we projected.
But to his point, you received more money in rebates.
Yes, oh, yes. 100, yeah, $96,000 more in rebates, correct.
And we won't see those for going forward, right? You're not expecting them?
Yeah, it's a one-time deal.
Now, was, so was our contract with you until we hit the $4,444,000 savings? Or is it the 18 years, and anything above that is beneficial?
The contract is in place for 18 years.
18 years, okay.
Yes. Now, to Jamie's point, we are going to be doing measurement and verification during a course of five years. So we reported on an installation period, did a report like this. This is year one. Now, for year two, there's not going to be a report. Administration wanted to see a report after year three. We're not going to do one for year four, but we're going to do one for year five. So, and it's already all paid for. We're still going to be tracking energy bills, we're going to be tracking the measures throughout that time. But our, two years from now, we'll be here talking about the same thing, about only years number two and number three together.
Yeah, with Energy Performance Contracts in the state of New York, you're, the energy services company has to guarantee the savings for an 18-year period.
Okay. Okay, thanks.
Keep in mind, we're also getting state aid on the cost of borrowing to do the project in addition to this.
Sure.
So that's the two things. So we're running up, you know, we pay, what, 15%? Because we're getting 85% of the cost of the original project back in aid.
It's definitely one of the few opportunities that I've seen in school districts where you can actually come out and add positive for doing a capital job.
Usually, usually they report for like three, isn't it?
Well, we decided to take-
We decided to go to five?
We decided to take the three reports and spread it over five years. That's all. So we get a longer period of time, we could see it. And then once you hear year five, if we're confident that those numbers are going to hold true, we just won't have any more reporting. Or if you want to see it again in a five-year point in time after that, just to be sure, we'd have to pay a fee to these folks to come in and do it. I just felt having a fewer, some more, fewer reports over a longer period of time. That's all. As opposed to one, two, three.
No other questions?
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thanks a lot.
So next on the agenda, we have Curriculum Instruction Update with Tony, Renee, RJ, and Danielle.
So we started off with giving you the link to the timelines from State Ed for ELA Math and Science. No really, you know, you can take a look at those, there's no really big changes since last time we presented. But just to let you know, we're on target with the curriculum and the work we've done and continue to do with the teachers. I'm going to start off, so I listed some bullet points by each of the curriculum areas at K-6, what we're working on. So specifically with ELA, I would say the strong focus is the areas of the foundational areas of reading, you know, the, I always say, the reading wars are back and alive and well again. And our teachers are asking good questions and realizing one of the things that we really needed to shore up is our phonemic awareness instruction at K-2. So we're doing work with that, looking at some new support material for the teachers on that. I sent- Sent three, we sent three teachers this summer and we'll send them again next summer to a training called Letters, which stands for Language Essentials for Teachers of Reading and Spelling. So, it's really a master's course, I will say, in reading and how reading happens with students and how you teach and support reading with students. It's a commitment on the part of the district to send them through for the two summers. It's really about $2,000 a teacher. And then myself and the two coaches are also going through the same coursework during the school year, so we don't need substitutes, so we could do that. And then, working together with them to see how do we embed these practices back into our daily instruction? Because it's not a program. It truly is a master's, beyond a master's level course on how reading and spelling and work. I have my masters in reading and it's still learning, you know, more information that's come out since the time when I got my masters. I mean, then looking at the programs we need to support that learning. So, that's really a big piece of our work. And then, looking at our instructional framework for literacy, and I've shown you that in the past, and it says it's K6. We're now at that point where we're going to be taking it starting this summer and working with the curriculum committees in ELA at each grade level and really tailoring it specifically for each grade level. How much time are you spending on phonics and phonemic awareness at a K1, 2 level versus at a 3 through 6 level? But also realizing we still need to continue that work at 3 through 6. It doesn't stop at K2. With mathematics, again, Kate touched upon that with her talk today with the learning coaches, are working on math workshop and that is a different look than it is with reading workshop and what that looks like. And using those modules that we've adapted, but how do we now take it to the next step to embed that discourse and conversation with students to deepen their understanding? And I was in a classroom today, in math, I will say, watching this in action and seeing the work the teacher has been doing. She shared with, the teacher shared with me that she's been working with Kate. And you could see that change. I've been in that teacher's classroom before and how her instruction changed. And she said she sees the kids talking deeper in math. This was the third grade classroom. And they were having great conversations and really explaining their thinking to each other. We've also formed a partnership with SU. As Eric talked about, we go to leadership meetings at BOSI's with our teachers and one of them is this math leadership group. Last year, in the past two years, we've worked with someone through SU, Dr. Charlotte Sharp through SU, I mean, at BOSI's. For whatever reason, BOSI's didn't, wasn't able to bring her back this year, but we reached out to her on her own along with Solvay Schools. We've formed a relationship with her that she's going to be working with our two schools and our coaches and our leadership group in math, K12, to again, talk about best practices, regardless of the program you're teaching. So, we'll be doing more of that work this year, too. I listed the other curriculum areas and some highlights there, but those are two areas that are a big focus along with our RTI, the work we're doing with our reading and math. And we, as Julie had mentioned, worked with our reading teachers to develop an assessment handbook for reading. I would like to get to that with math, too, now that we have the full math RTI department. But with the reading, really shoring up and making sure that we're consistent in the assessments and the way we're progress monitoring, working with kids and doing that same work in math.
Okay, so for 712, so, not too much has changed since the last time we talked to you in September, I think it was, or August? I can't remember. September. Seems like yesterday. So, really, I will point out that for social studies, the biggest things there are students will be taking for the first time the Global Two Framework Exam. And then, in the following year, they'll be taking the new framework exam in US history. So, we are well on the way preparing our students for, which the biggest thing for that is the Enduring Issues Essay. So, we've done the alignment work for that, for our students to be prepared. It is writing, so it's writing intensive, so that's going to be always a challenge for students. But our teachers have been working very, very hard on that. For world languages, that's going to be another big change that's coming up. It's no longer going to be referred to as LOT. So, moving forward, we'll change our language to world languages. And the current LOT standards are going to be updated and reflective, more reflective of the ACTFEL standards. So, that's going to be a change for our teachers. And we just went to the World Language National Conference. We took a team of teachers and the biggest push for our world languages is something that's called comprehensive input, which is let's take the worksheets away and let's have our kids engaged in actually conversing in the language and, you know, playing with the language and less of a grammar focus in the beginning. So, that's very scary for people who have been teaching grammar-focused languages with worksheets. So, it was pretty interesting and we have some teachers doing some great things at Baker High School. We have a couple of teachers who have taken the desks out of the classrooms and kids sit in circles and large groups and smaller groups engaging in the language. And so, that's been a pretty big change there. And those standards are going to be open for, probably in September is the goal. So, we have two of our teachers who are part of the process and bringing back information right from the state level so that we're, you know, in a pretty good shape in terms of what's happening there. SEAL by Literacy is up and running. We have 19 candidates this year, so we're very excited about that. And also, of course, we have the Latin teacher. So, we're looking at adding Latin and getting that program rebuilt. So, very excited about that. So, those are some of the major changes that are happening in, and I would say for math, we are looking at, we went to the math conference in Rochester and we had teachers who expressed an interest in updating our calculators that the students are currently using. So, the way they described it to me was that our students are using a flip phone instead of an iPhone when it's, when it comes to the calculators. So, I sat in on a session with a couple of the teachers at the math conference with two teachers in the Rochester area who use this particular calculator, showed us the benefits of how it's helped them with the curriculum and how much easier it is for students to navigate, you know. They tried to give me one and I said, please don't give me one of these. I will have no idea what to do with it. And, but our teachers were very excited. They were, you know, taking a look at that. So, we have the calculator committee that's going to meet. I know, it sounds exciting, doesn't it? So, they're coming together. We're going to meet in January and we're going to start to look at that process and to see potentially what that's going to look like. But our teachers are very excited that it could potentially have a really nice impact on our curriculum in terms of how they present the curriculum to the students because there's so much you can do. It's like having a mini-computer, like a phone in your, in your hands. So, that's the quick and dirty down update for 712.
I didn't include the slide because I had a department meeting between the snow day there and the rescheduling of this meeting, but I wanted to just give you an update. It never dawned on me to tell you this. There's, we're involved, my department's involved with so many more things than what you see, you know? We all talk about Chromebooks and iPads and all that, but right now, we're, my department is involved in 13 different initiatives that are going on in the district. So, we're involved with a new phone system, voice-over IP that runs on our network, the new, the Vocera pilot that's going to be happening at Baker, Nimble Storage, I'll tell you more about that later, the Pixelot cameras that are out at the field, the football field and in the, in the main gym, the ones that track the sports events, we're involved that. I spent Wednesday, Pi Day, underneath the bleachers at Baker, so that was fun. We're involved with the Baker Cafe, especially the signage, the menu board signage, we're involved with that. Heavily involved with the new transportation building, the move to there and getting that network up and running. The VDI and a Cameo pilot, I'll tell you about that. We're piloting new type of a smartboard called View Sonic. It's less expensive, but it's more higher performance than the smartboards we have now. We have a Tools Forever, which is our automated account provisioning system that's, we're working on, which was part of the audit findings that the auditors were really happy. We're going to go with an automated account provisioning system. We're always involved with the, with the camera system and making sure that's doing what it needs to be doing and recording everything. We're supporting the esports club. Tom is volunteering his time on Wednesday nights to keep those kids up and running. I think he has more fun than they do, but that's okay. I don't know if you know, but I have two or three interns that come from either OCC or Bryan and Stratton every year. And I'm on my 16th intern and I just talked to the last one. And all 16 of those interns have got jobs since they've come here. So, that's a pretty good track record. We're also working on our program called the Internet of Things. Everything runs on the internet now on our network and everything is a threat vector. Even the door locks, the thermostats, anything that's connected to the network is a way people can get in here. And we're working right now to make sure that everything is secured on that. So, those are just some of the, the outlined things that, I don't know if you're aware we're doing, but it's keeping us busy. So, shifting over. So, we, you know, we operate through the district technology kind of planning committee. And we came up with goals and those goals are listed to provide students with technology options that'll address their pace and learning style, increase the accessibility of internet-capable devices to all students, and provide training and support. So, some of the things we're doing is, we have a variety of technology. I think you know that just by walking around the buildings. There's, you know, desktops. Well, we have, I can tell you, we have 1,800 iPads, 6,300 Chromebooks, 2,100 PCs. Every room, every nook and cranny of every building has some kind of interactive whiteboard. So, altogether, we're supporting over 10,000 pieces of equipment throughout our department. And then, as Eric mentioned, all the offerings that we do through him, he's our technology go-to guy, to keep the teachers, you know, teaching with technology in a way that's going to engage kids and help them use the technology so that the learning happens at a better pace. So, some of the things I highlighted out of all that list were, you know, we did, for CTV readiness, for the, for the testing, we have enough Chromebooks now so that we can, kids can test in spaces that are comfortable for them, either in classrooms or larger group rooms. Our internet, our Wi-Fi capacity supports it, so it's not a stressful situation like it was the first couple of years. That's if we don't get attacked during the test. So, other things I've put into place to handle that. The Nimble Storage, that's there to improve, improve performance. We were having some odd problems and it surfaced in, in the project lead-away classes where the students were trying to use virtual desktops and they weren't performing properly. So, long story short, we found out that our, our backup, our weekly backup to BOSI's of our data was starting, kicking off on a Friday night and not finishing till Thursday morning. So, it was taking almost a week for that. So, we researched that and we were able to purchase a really good storage system called Nimble Storage. And now, when our backup kicks off on Friday night, it's done by Saturday morning. So, and the impact that had on instruction was all that, all that processing capacity during the week was gone and it was, it was dedicated to getting that backup done. Now, we're not seeing those problems. The backup happens quick, there's more space in the pipe for the internet and things are running smoother. I know, it's tough to listen to. As far as the ed law 2D and all those safety concerns and audit, we're implementing almost every audit finding that was suggested to us has been implemented. John Serrio's job has really morphed into a lot more security, security-oriented versus network. So, it's, it's an ever, ever-evolving challenge. Professional learning, Eric talked about the courses that we're offering after school for teachers in both K6 and 712. And in the curriculum, we've developed the Internet Safety and Digital Citizenship Curriculum. I always have trouble with that. The, the major themes are internet safety, security, security and privacy, cyberbullying, relationships and communication, digital footprint, and self-image and identity. Those are the themes that are being taught throughout K through 12. Done.
And then, I just wanted to share some of what I've been up to over the last five months, being in a new position as the Director of Academic Services and Accountability. I often get asked, well, what is it that you do or what is it that you've been working on? And so, I tried to sum up some of the things that I've been working on as it relates to academic services specifically. Tonight, you've heard, whether it was from the learning coaches or from some of what Tony and Renee shared, when it comes to our response to intervention. In the past, that's really been geared much more toward academics. As you know, we're really striving to look at the whole child. And so, you'll hear me speak in a little while after this presentation about how we're looking at absenteeism, but really that MTSS framework looks at discipline data or behavioral data as well. And so, being able to support all of those different supports within the school district from the data side. I light up when I hear, well, let's look at the data or I count how many times I hear, what's the data say? So that I can, again, best support what that looks like. In addition to that, being the district's initial 504 chairperson gets me right into the buildings, gets me making very student-centered decisions. And I cannot say enough about how much I've enjoyed being able to have those interactions on a weekly basis. On the accountability end, just learning more about what that reporting entails, whether it's academics, absenteeism, or discipline, and also being able to support the systems that we have in place to track some of that reporting or track some of that data. Obviously, School Tool is our student information system, but reports get pulled out of that constantly, primarily by Mary Moyer, but I work very closely with Mary to learn about some of that and how the data gets pulled from School Tool to what we refer to as Level Zero, Level One, and Level Two state reporting. Title is a very big part of my position. Primarily, I work on it over the summer, but it often has different odds and ends that come up throughout the school year because the funding supports our RTI services, it supports some of our learning coach work, and it also supports, when it comes to Title Four, our STEM advisors as well as currently our, our school social worker here at Dergi. So, again, being able to use some of that data to make some of those programming decisions. I also listed some of the state and district data that I support. So, again, School Tool maintains a lot of our student-specific data, but when it comes to the testing of students, regions data, New York State 3 through 8 testing, our Amesweb district benchmarking data that we use for our kindergarten and first grade students, our STAR benchmarking that we use grades 2 through 8. BIMAS, we, as you know, piloted at Van Buren and Eldon about three years ago. Last year, we expanded that K5 and this year, we were fortunate enough to expand that to the middle school level with our sixth grade students. So, Jenna Wolken, our district psychologist, who's also partly our Ray School psychologist, has been huge in getting BIMAs up and running over at Ray. And currently, I'm also continuing to support some of the rollout with EDOCTRINA to, again, have a place to house a lot of our student-specific data and what they're working on when it comes to really individual and specific learning goals. I also support our acceleration committee. I've done a lot of work when it comes to sharing with that committee just what some of the results have been over the last three years or so. But that entails monitoring course scores every five weeks and updating the committee when it comes to some of that work. I wanted to close our presentation really just by highlighting one of the biggest pieces of learning for me, but I think what makes my position ultimately most valuable to the teams that I work with. I learned how the curriculum and instruction department is able to work on a national, state, and regional level. I've learned at that regional level how I am our district's representative in our CINIRIC, which is again, just the Central New York Regional Information Center, but really being able to give them feedback about how all of our district systems are working or be able to say, hey, it would be really great if School could, School Tool could do this. Or being able to... Or being able to make recommendations when it comes to just some of the different reporting features in Ames Web or STAR or BIMAS, even EDOC Trina. But they need to hear from people who are using some of these systems in order to make their systems really work and be tailored for how we use them. So that's been a great experience for me, but whether it's at the district level or even with our building teams, the data's only as good as how we use it. And I can't, you know, reinforce that point enough. So I really feel lucky to be able to work with this team, to be able to work with our special ed department, and try to, again, make that multi-tiered system of support really come together as a whole. Any questions from anybody?
Yeah, I just have one. Most of these things, I can kind of guess how, where you're getting the information from, but when it comes to like the accountability, discipline reporting, what exactly has to be reported and how is that being collected? And is there consistency across all the buildings so we can make comparisons?
Sure. I think, you know, when it comes to that discipline reporting, ultimately, the shift we've seen over the last few years for what we're accountable for comes to our suspension rates and our suspension data, especially by subgroups. But even actually at our last instructional leadership meeting, our focus area was on some of that discipline reporting. And looking both at the secondary level and at the elementary level when it comes to office referrals, my caution when using that data to make decisions is that it's the behavior after the fact, and it's that reaction where the BIMAS data really dives into what more or less are the behaviors that are happening and how we can be more proactive to put supports in place or interventions in place for students and be able to track some of their progress with it. So it's kind of twofold, I think. One of the things that we talked about at this, our last instructional leadership meeting was a new feature in School Tool when it comes to classroom incident reporting, because it might not always be an office-level referral that a teacher is looking to report out on. And so we were brainstorming together as an administrative team of what that could look like at the building level and what that could look like for our teachers, again, when it comes to a behavior that, that again, might not be at the office referral level, but at the same time, something that we want to track. So using the Code of Conduct as our guide, and how do we disaggregate some of the data that we're seeing? For example, what defines other unacceptable behavior in one building compared to another?
Yeah, my questions stem from the report that we got from one of the goals for McNamara and the referrals, and the numbers went way down. So I guess my, I'm looking at it as, okay, we're not referring students to the office or to record any of this, but are the behaviors changing and are those being reported within the classrooms so you can see whether whatever methods they are choosing to use, they're getting positive results and they're not repeating themselves over and over again?
I would say that one of the biggest shifts, especially when it came to that building level plan, but especially at the elementary level, one of the protocols that we've started to use when it comes to looking at the BIMAS data is called Grow the Green. And the focus of it's a Tier One protocol, where in the past, districts beyond just Baldwinsville have focused primarily on the students who are in the red, otherwise known as our Tier Three or our highest level of support. But we often have to examine what we're doing at the foundational level so that at Tier Two, we're building upon that, and then at Tier Three, building upon that. So a lot of the things that, you know, whether it's our school counseling update, or it comes to some of the supports that our social workers are doing with our social emotional curriculum pushing into classrooms at various grade levels, again, it goes back to some of that Tier One support. So you mentioned McNamara. Things is seemingly simple, is having morning meeting every morning or having a cooldown spot, are supports that are put in place for every student, not just students who might be struggling.
I got a question for RJ. I know in the last couple of years, we upgraded the network, added a lot of network capacity. Where do you see us now? Are we able to support everything? Do you see another upgrade or increased capacity coming soon? Or where does that stand?
Well, it's funny, this Friday, I meet with the Customer Service Advisory Committee at BOSI's, and my, my question to them is going to be, you know, what are their plans for updating the WAN, the Wide Area Network? Because right now, our inner capacity is huge, but the bottleneck is, how much can we filter? How much traffic can we filter out through their pipe to the Internet? I just pulled it up. All day long, we are pegged. We get, we get 100 megs of Internet, and we are pegged the whole day. And at night, it goes back down because there's nobody here. But, so I think moving forward as a region, they're going to have to address how we're going to get a bigger pipeline out to the, out to them and then out to the Internet.
Is that 100 meg for the district or for the beach building?
It's a gig, I'm sorry. It's a gig.
For the district?
Thousand megs for the district, yeah.
Wow.
Yeah. And we're full all the time.
Yeah, I'm sure.
Yeah.
Thanks.
RJ, I just have one question about that Ed Law 2D, because I've heard it during the summer and some law conferences I went to so far this year. How, how does it work in our district? Like, that seems like something that's going to be a very challenging thing with the agreements you need to have with all these different subcontract, whatever they're called. How are we going to do that? Like, because I said, apps are included in this, and I know teachers, you don't want to micromanage teachers, but at the same time, we need to make sure we have protocols in place to protect, protect us from liability issues if PPI got out there. So is there like some sort of process teachers have to go through when they want to use an app to make sure that those things are in place? Or, I mean, because there's so many things that are being created all the time, like how do you keep up and how, as a district, do you see us creating something to make sure we're always protected?
All the districts are struggling with that because, you know, as a teacher, I can have an app on my personal phone and use it. My wife does. She uses some app that she uses to go back and forth with her parents. I can't think of the name of it right now. Remind. And so I don't know what's out there, but for, for thing, for, for educational resources right now, software, anything like that has to come through me, and I work with the principals to make sure it's, you know, sound. Then, as the District Data Privacy Officer, me, I'm, I'm having to reach out to the vendors, to the third party, to say, show me your privacy statement. I need it, I need it, I need an attestation that says you're not going to, if we have to give you the student's email address to make your product work, you have to prove to me that you're not going to turn around and sell those email addresses. And so I have to, it's a, it's a manual labor process where I have to contact the vendor, try to get the attestation. I keep it on record. I am going to, I am looking into, the, BOSI's is offering a service now called Data Privacy and Security Service. I'll be meeting with them on Friday to investigate, to see what they have to offer for that. They say they have an inventory system that will inventory your software and help you organize all that, those, you know, privacy statements and all that. So I'm going to go take a look at that. That might be something that could help me, because right now, I just, it's something that I created myself. But yeah, that's, that's going to be a challenge. That's going to be a challenge for all of us.
The most recent one, I went to, the Farr one, they did say, and you guys might want to look into this, they already have language already crafted to cover some of this that school districts can reach out to them to get, they may help with some of this, which just seems to be a really big topic right now with the passage of this law.
Yeah.
Just real quickly, we are ahead of the game, so the policy, I believe, has been updated. And we have, at the reorg meeting, identified RJ as the Data Privacy Officer. I know that the guidance from Farr and other, you know, Erie One, schools haven't even done that yet, and they need to do that by, I believe, it's January timeframe. So thankfully, that's all covered from us. And I do know that part of the BOSI's service, the RIC's service is that the data privacy officers are meeting regularly. We had our BOSI service visit two weeks ago, and that was one of the things that we talked about with Colleen Vigiano and Pam and all the folks over at BOSI. So that is something that RJ will be attending, and then Matt also, I'm going to try to attend some of those as well, just to have another ear in the, in the room with anything related to the policy aspect of it. Other questions?
I have a quick question, I think, for Renee. You mentioned the conference on language. I forget the term you used, load. You didn't use load, it was the other one.
World Language?
Yes.
Yes.
So, you know, Matt's reported that, back to us, that he's talking with the Ray Middle School about maybe starting some load there. Was there any discussion at that conference about, you know, starting earlier, ideal timeframes to start?
Oh, yeah. The teachers there had me as a, you know, I was captive audience, so of course, they were telling me every night how great it would be. Yeah, I mean, but in terms of like sessions and things like that, it was K-12. So there were sessions for, you know, that K through seven band, so, you know, it's, it's alive and well across the country for sure. It was the first time that we've sent people to the national conference, and it was amazing. It was a great opportunity. So, you know, just to get our teachers thinking outside of a worksheet-based language program, which they're very excited about, it's just, how do you do it? And how do you let go of some practices that we've been doing for a very long time? And it's sometimes a little scary to do that, but yeah, absolutely. They were right on me and continue to be. What are we going to do? So I'm just, you know, working with Matt and Joe on what are the next steps. Yeah.
Actually, that leads to a question that I have. So when you talk about involving the teachers in some of these various things, in talking to board members from other districts, they, I've talked to them a little bit about the size of their curriculum departments. And some of them have curriculum departments that are much larger and have people that are specializing in that versus using teachers to do some of that development. What do you think the benefit of doing it this way is? And as we're going into budgeting, what, in a perfect world, what would you want or need? I'm just curious, because I know that obviously, we have a very different setup here with a smaller department that's working more with the teachers.
You mean having, what's the benefit of having somebody specific to?
No, what are, what are you looking for? You know, are you happy with the way things are in the curriculum department, pulling out the teachers more to help with that development? In a perfect world, would you like to see something different? Do you need more dedicated resources for curriculum development?
I personally believe that the, the teacher input is, you know, so valuable to hand that off to someone else, that, you know, our biggest, you know, block all the ti, is time. It's, it's time, you know? I'm thinking, oh, my gosh, two weeks, we're going to be on break. Wouldn't I die to have some of those days? And I've actually had some teachers say, boy, you know, that's a long time to be off. And so, you know, there's, I wish we had more flexibility in the time that we had to bring people in. You know, it doesn't work for everybody, but, you know, there, that's, that's really our biggest thing is time. I think teachers really want to be a part of the process and to engage with, you know, the curriculum and the decisions that are made. And I think, for the most part, I feel like we've done a very good job in that. You know, I'll speak for myself, and I know Tony, you know, you do a lot, you do a lot of that as well. And I, I think that's why the teachers feel like they're in a good spot. So when we go to our, our regional BOSI's meetings, inevitably, you know, either we're bored because we've already been there and done that, and, but it makes our teachers feel like, you know, we are in a good spot. So I think having that kind of perspective is very helpful. So I, I don't know if I would necessarily change anything other than I would just love to have a longer school year with just teachers, no kids.
But, but, I'm sorry, but that does go to Tony, I think, one of the questions that I asked you at one of my first meetings, and you said, I'd love more money in the summer.
So, a couple of things. One would be, you know, in an ideal world, to be able to work with teachers throughout the year would be great, because, you know, many come during the summer, but you can't always get everyone you need to in the summer, so that's always a challenge. Totally understand, the teachers would be the first to say, their, their most important place to be is in the classroom. But to say to hire, so I do know districts that have like a, a science director maybe or, you know, whatever, all the different departments. I don't think that, I would, I mean, I'll be honest, I mean, I think the coaches have been a huge help, huge support. I mean, I look back, been here long enough to remember a K-12 curriculum director, and that's it. Okay, that's all we had to what we have now. So to me, yeah, we're, you know, this is the largest department's been in my lifetime in quite a while. But to have the learning coaches, I think, are key. I think maybe looking at some point, going back to having some department chairs or some curriculum, people at the elementary level like we used to have, sometimes just helps with that communication aspect, too. But, you know, looking at what, how the department, departments work at 712 and having department meetings there, started doing the same thing at the elementary this year. So now, meeting twice a year by department, so there's a second grade department meeting where all the second grade teachers now come together at the end of the day, twice a year. That in itself, well, didn't go over great in the beginning, but once they've come to them, my feedback has been, they have found it very beneficial that they're all hearing the same thing. So I think, you know, if anything, I know for me, would be to continue with those learning coaches and expanding that when possible, and then, you know, continuing with that summertime, because, I mean, I know, we all know that's a huge expense, but we get so much done. The teachers work really hard over the summer on so much. And then possibly looking at a few department chairs at the, at the K-12 level to help that in-school dissemination of information and consistency.
Okay, nice job, guys. Danielle's going to stay up for the chronic absenteeism report. And we'll hopefully move quickly, quickly through that.
I'll try, Joe. I don't know, I think the 180 minutes, I'm, I'm still doing good. I could take a whole hour. Before I dive into explaining some of what is in the report that I'm going to share with you tonight, I really just wanted to, again, revisit that, over the last couple of years, reporting for accountability purposes when it comes to chronic absenteeism is fairly new, and the difference or the shift there is instead of focusing on primarily unexcused absences or truancy issues, chronic absenteeism focuses on excused as well as unexcused absences. And so, again, when you're pulling in some of those excused absences into what we previously were looking at with the truancy or the unexcused, there's a different level of students that you capture in that mix. And so, really, as, as I've grown into this position, I've started to work very closely with Julie Carpenter, who has really brought a medical piece to understanding for some of the reasons that students are absent. So I will explain some of that as we go through our report tonight. I think that, you know, ultimately, the, the purpose of looking at chronic absenteeism is because we know students who miss 10% of days, only 18 days a year, can really negatively impact their academic performance. And so, again, as we're building these multi-tiered systems of support, we want to try to be looking at, how does that absenteeism affect their academic performance? How does it impact their behaviors as well? When we're looking at the report in just a minute, we're going to also be looking at a different kind of breakdown where we're looking by subgroups. And so those subgroups might be looking by gender, it might be looking by race or ethnicity, it might be looking at different program services such as students with disabilities, economically disadvantaged students, and also, it breaks our absenteeism rates down by grade level. So what we're going to be looking at is really just the district level data. The report that you have access to does highlight the reports for each building, but again, the, the district is, is a pretty good summary of what each building's data looks like. The report that you have in front of you is based off of marking period one, and so when we look at this report, any of the And so, when we look at this report, any, uh, of the numbers highlighted in that red represent students who are chronically absent. So, again, that definition is students who are missing days for excused or for unexcused reasons, and students who are missing 10% or more of the days that they're enrolled. The students who this doesn't include are students who are, uh, out of school for homebound medical instruction. And I, I also just wanna mention that, uh, student suspension days are not included in this data either. Uh, students in, or numbers in the yellow range represent, uh, five to nine percent of enrolled school days missed, so these students are at risk of becoming chronically absent. And then, anybody in the green, uh, is missing anywhere between zero and four percent of enrolled days. So, as you can see, for all students, all 5,447, uh, who have been enrolled at least one day since this school year, uh, we have 79.4% meeting our district's accountability rate or our district's absenteeism rate. But then, 12% who are at risk for becoming chronically absent, and 8.6% who, as of the end of the first marking period, were considered chronically absent. You can see how, like I mentioned, the breakdown by subgroup, uh, gets into gender breakdowns as you scroll onto the second page, looking at race or ethnicity, and then looking at different program services, uh, as you continue to scroll down onto page three. So, I'm just gonna highlight some of the, uh, higher areas or those higher percentages of students who are in that chronically absent category. I think that, you know, when you compare the students who are in these subgroups and, and what our district enrollment, our district makeup is, where we see some of the biggest discrepancies or the biggest differences, uh, over time has been for our economically disadvantaged population, because that population in and of itself has doubled over the last 10 years. So, we're currently around a 28% poverty rate. So, just zooming in on that economically disadvantaged subgroup, we notice that, uh, we have about 15.7% of students who are chronically absent. And research shows that students who, uh, might live in high poverty are four times more likely to be chronically absent for reasons that are beyond their control. Whether it's unstable housing, whether it's unreliable transportation, lack of access to healthcare, ultimately, what we need to be considering when it comes to our practices or when it comes to our culture are what are the root causes for students to be absent. And when you're thinking about that economically disadvantaged subgroup, again, the, the group where we've seen the most shift over time, um, those might be some of the areas that they're noticing or that they're experiencing on a day-to-day basis that, again, they might not have that control over.
Danielle, can I just ask you a question for?
Sure.
For the economically disadvantaged, you just, um, named a, listed a couple of different reasons, one of them being transportation. We provide transportation for all students, so how would that, um, piece be, um, a, a factor?
Sure, so I know just from personal conversations, whether it was at the teacher level or at the principal level, or now working with our principals in, in addressing some of this, often, you'll have a situation where, uh, mom or dad, maybe it's a single-family household even, is working all night, and they get home at 3:00, 4:00 in the morning, they want to go to sleep, kids wake up in the morning on their own, miss the bus, have to wake mom or dad up, feel bad about waking mom or dad up. Sometimes, in a different situation, uh, mom or dad has to leave for work before the students wake up to go to school in the morning. But again, similarly, they're missing the bus and not attending school regularly. Or again, that, you know, just lack of access to healthcare, any, anything, um, stemming from being economically disadvantaged can truly impact their ability to attend.
So, on these tables, um, you also, you also said homeless in there, and there is a category for that?
There is.
So, are they being double counted?
Yes.
Okay, that was my other.
Yep, so you'll notice that across, uh, many of those different subgroups. Obviously, basic example, the gender subgroups. Uh, students who are counted as male or female might also be counted in, uh, the white subgroup. We have about 88% of students who are white, but they might also be counted in students with disabilities, they might also be counted in economically disadvantaged. So, uh, as, again, I, I've learned a lot about chronic absenteeism, or as, really, a lot has been offered at the regional level when it comes to addressing chronic absenteeism. My biggest piece of learning from attending the, um, state administrators' conference was the saying, "To dig for deep." And so, who is the student, who might be a male student, uh, at the ninth grade level, who is a student with disabilities, who's also economically disadvantaged? And being able to make the most impact when you really zoom in and you look at students who are, um, meeting all of those different criteria. So, yes, they are double counted. You'll notice that, um, on the report, there's that blue hyperlink when it comes to the numbers. So, when we're logged into our state portal, uh, whether it's a district-level administrator or a building-level administrator, clicking on that number brings you to a spreadsheet of who those students specifically are in order to provide, uh, those resources and support.
How, how do we get that data for each student? How do we know they're economically disadvantaged or a English-language learner or?
Sure.
Like, I think of, like, I remember registering in kindergarten, and I don't remember updating it every year, so even some people may be economically disadvantaged, or not when they enrolled, but become that, you know? How do we track all that? And what accuracy do we have to that?
That's, that's one of the biggest pieces of, you know, this puzzle, is, is collecting that accurate data and being able to identify students accurately. So, you're absolutely right, when students register, there are many pieces of data that are self-reported at that, at that specific moment of registration. But then, there's also, you know, other groups, students with disabilities, for example, who, you know, that's a, a decision based on a, a committee, or, um, being able to self-report that economically disadvantaged status. There are certainly, you know, some families who probably qualify that don't report, and just being able to, you know, do our, our best to keep the most accurate data possible when it comes to taking all of those things into consideration, that some are self-reported, some are district-identified. But how do we, you know, ultimately, reach out and, and provide the support to?
So, how are you getting the economically disadvantaged number now? Is it through school lunch program?
Yes, yeah, it's based off of free and reduced lunch.
What do we do with the data now that we have it? And we, and we know where the problem areas are?
Yeah, so, you know, I think that, obviously, that first step is knowing what the data shows, being able to identify who the students are, um, but then, being able to work with our building-level teams so that they know where to find that data on, really, there's a report in school tool that I introduced our administrators to at the beginning of the year that, uh, updates itself on a daily basis, and they can be running to, um, again, just identify who those students are. But when it comes to working with those building-level teams, I know that at Baker, for example, um, Chris Denton has been huge in putting this attendance intervention protocol in place that we've kind of been piloting over the last year. He actually started it when he was at RAY. And being able to manage just some of the record-keeping that goes along with each step of this protocol. So, for example, step one might be the teacher reaching out to the student, step two might be the teacher reaching out to the parent, then there might be a counselor, social worker, psychologist involvement. I know that Carrie Lamachia's continuing to do work with the guidance counselors or the social workers or the psychologists to make home visits. And, again, just make that connection with families so that students know that we miss them when they're absent, and building that culture so that students ultimately want to come to school in the first place. So, that culture obviously plays a big role in, well, what do we do about the data? Because, eh, school has to be a welcoming place for all students, and this subgroup analysis can really help us break down what those root causes are for some of our groups not attending school regularly. Like, I would say my biggest piece of involvement with that is the data end and collecting accurate data and making sure that our buildings have the data that they need to do some of the amazing things that we do. I know I've done some pretty specific reporting for RAY. RAY has a team that's, uh, looking at attendance data specifically. It was actually one of their strategic planning goals, and it, it's really just, you know, there's a wide variety of things that we can do to address it. Even right down to the student mentors that we heard open up tonight, I think that those connections are where we'll, we'll see the most impact.
We report this annually? For how long?
How long have we been doing this?
Yeah.
Uh, last year was the first year.
It was the first year? Okay, so I was just curious as to what we see in trends, but we're not gonna see anything if this was only year two.
No, but they'll have an idea, I mean, based on last year, also looking over the course of the school year. So, each quarter, that is something that we also shared with the board at the academic goal update. So, two years' worth of information. I mean, we can go back further, um, for students if we, if we need to. I mean, when I say "we," I mean the teachers and the student, or the principals for specific students, so that we can see if there's trends, the fact that we can drill down in.
Got it.
Which will be helpful.
Okay, and that is even, you know, an example I mentioned earlier, just how do we utilize our student information system the best that we can? And, um, sometimes it comes to checking off a checkbox behind the scenes that populates a, a report in a different way. And just being able to get that in the hands of the teachers, in the hands of our administrators. One of the reports actually, um, tracks that attendance data over time, where, instead of having to click through multiple screens per every student, um, something that I'm, uh, going to be launching soon is just a one-click graph that school tool's able to pull.
So, the, um, these numbers are actually going to, I mean, for chronic absenteeism, they're saying the, more often you obviously miss school, then your student achievement's going to decrease, and we're, we're looking at, we're going to be, um, evaluated as a district based on our achievement gaps between a bunch of these different subgroups.
Correct.
If, my guess is that probably, we're gonna see some, uh, what's the word?
We will be held accountable.
We're going to be held accountable, but we're going to see some parallels between the absenteeism and student achievement, and how do we close those gaps?
Right.
Academically, if we can't get the kids to school, relationships is one of them, but coming up with different strategies and getting them excited and involved somehow. But some of these numbers, I'm looking at some of these numbers, I know it's only for the first 10 weeks, but I'm sitting here thinking, oh, my gosh, by the end of the school year, is this going to get better or worse, you know?
Sure, if, and if we had that crystal ball, you know, we would certainly be able to, um, manage that. But I think keeping tabs on it, again, on a consistent basis, is what's going to make some of that shift.
I think, I think Joe made a statement a few meetings ago, correct me if I'm wrong. We usually see the, the highest absenteeism in the beginning of the year, and then it gets better as the year goes on. Is that inaccurate?
That was a trend from the prior years. I mean, you think about, you know, you're essentially 10% very few days with only, um, what was it, 40 days?
There were 40 sixties in this reporting cycle.
Now, if these students have turned it around, and now they're showing up on a regular basis, 'cause the interventions have been put in place, plus, it takes into consideration those students that during this period were, um, considered no-shows and now may have dropped out. I mean, once they hit a 20-day threshold and they're over compulsory school age, um, and we've done everything we can to try to get them here, those students would eventually phase out of this report, because they'll be reported elsewhere on a, on a dropout. So, that is an assumption that I'm making that I think's relatively accurate.
Or there's also students who are in this report currently, uh, who we know are being treated medically but haven't been moved to home instruction yet. And so, uh, th- there's actually a student in here who hasn't made it to school at all this year, unfortunately, um, but is too ill to receive home instruction. And so, you notice things like that reflected in the data as well.
Danielle, how many students would that involve that are chronically ill and miss school a high number of days because of illness? 'Cause, I mean, that's excusable, and there are other factors, too, with some children. I guess I'd like to see these numbers exclude them and know how many are just basically skipping school, so to speak, rather than out because of, you know, a severe illness or another, uh, personal factor that's, uh, prevents them from being in school. I mean, a lot of this stuff, you look at it, you figure, I'm not surprised, and it puts numbers to what you pretty much already knew. But I would like to see the numbers with those students taken out to see.
There's, there's definitely, you know, a limited number when it comes to the students who are in transition or who could move to that home instruction. Again, students who are on home instruction are not included in these. But I would say that, you know, the majority, there are those other attendance issues going on beyond the excused medical reasons.
I can remember as a student and as a teacher, we had students with chronic asthma, and they, they missed a lot of school, and we had students that had, uh, not life-threatening illnesses, but illnesses that kept them out of school frequently. And some of them did all right academically, but you're always gonna have that population that, through no fault of their own, just can't be in school for whatever reason. And we have, uh, I don't know what that population would be, but it's interesting. And we just read that article in the paper about the student we had who had a complete, um, intestine transplant, and he still got through school even though he couldn't eat anything, and he was here on a regular basis. I don't know what his attendance was like, but we do have students with those types of issues, and, you know, others that, I missed the bus, I was at a hockey game, we extended our vacation by a week and a half, you know, that type of thing. And that's what I think our biggest concern is.
And like I mentioned, too, you know, working closely with Julie Carpenter, she's been huge, 'cause she's also much into her data. But we're noticing a dramatic increase in students with, uh, mental health diagnoses, anxiety, for example, um, where we really have to make sure that we have close communication with our physicians. And, uh, Julie is great at working with the physicians to ensure that, uh, students who might not be able to come to school at a moment in time are, you know, working toward returning, because unfortunately, we do see a number who, once they, uh, aren't coming anymore, don't come back. And we know that that's not, uh, you know, ultimately going to help them in, in life to, um, not meet some of those requirements, like coming to school or going to work and things like that.
I think we have to be careful, though, of saying, um, looking at the numbers and saying, "I'm not surprised by something," um, because our job is that, and these kids are, through no fault of their own, generally are not coming to school. There's issues. Obviously, economically disadvantaged kids aren't choosing to be economically disadvantaged, and so, it is our job to make sure that we're trying to address those systems to the level, or address those issues to the level that we're able to, um, if it's providing resources to, you know, mom, dad, grandma, grandpa, um, all of those things. I think it's important to recognize, um, that we shouldn't be making assumptions about why people aren't coming to school.
And I know that, you know, a big push or the, a big piece of the reason for accountability is to provide that equitable access. And again, looking at the whole child when it comes to making some of these decisions or being able to put those supports in place, uh, while it might not be, you know, an academic support or while there might be a need for academic support, what is the root cause for that? And if it's because students are missing a lot of days, how are we using our systems of support to get them to school to improve that academic performance as well?
And, and to Kim's point, who's like, the person working directly with those kids? Is that like the principals and assistant principals? Is that the guidance?
You know, all, all that it takes is someone, and it really doesn't matter who that person is. It, it can be a high school student, it could be a friend, it can be a, a school administrator, right up through our superintendent, as long as it's someone who makes that connection with a student, that could be all that they need to show up every day.
But, but who do we rely on to recognize those trends of who's absent regularly?
Uh, I would say it, it's different at the elementary level compared to the secondary. I would say it's different at the elementary level compared to the secondary. Definitely, you know, overseen by the building-level administrators, but we have different levels of support. Where at the secondary level, it might be more counselor-driven. But at the elementary level, social worker-driven.
Okay. Thanks.
Absolutely.
All right. Thank you, Danielle.
Thank you, everybody. Great questions.
Leadership report. I think we move on to the budget presentations.
Are you going to go first or Dana?
Dana's been sitting here. Why don't we get Dana? Why don't we get Dana to come up and do his picture?
We'll go to C first, the budget.
Thank you.
as Jamie likes to state every year, this is a work in progress. So again, we'll be looking at this moving forward. An example of how we try to refine things is tomorrow, I have a meeting with the facility in Oneida that we gauged our building off from. We've got two things that typically drive our budget. Well, usually one thing, and this year, definitely two things, which is usually payroll, probably the biggest thing that pushes our budget. And then this year, we have the new facility. So with that, that's pretty much unknown to us. It's a brand-new facility. Yes, of course, we can do, you know, educated calculations on knowing that we have a building that's basically four times the size of the one that we have. But we really don't have any practical knowledge of the brand-new building. So tomorrow, I plan on going to the facility that we based it off from and just have a casual conversation with the director down there and try to find out some of the things that he's experienced. Because he's been in it probably five years, six years now. So that's just a way of, you know, try to, you know, increase the accuracy of what we're doing. So again, if we look at the overall transportation budget compared to actual last year, what we budgeted, and then our proposal this year, again, as we go through it, we'll see that salaries with our estimated increases, we have a contract coming due this year, too, with CSEA, and then our new building are probably the biggest things that we're putting money for the increases in. Any questions on the large overview? Again, the summary down at the bottom. Now we start getting into the, a little bit, some of the trends that we can look from the past years. Again, Jamie has always tasked me with trying to match our budget with actual, based off the data from years previous, and try to get it as close as possible without, you know, an exorbitant amount of fund balance. Bus purchase, very similar to years past. We have seven large buses, two of the Type A, smaller little van chassis buses. And again, this year, we are purchasing one large wheelchair bus. Again, that we're seeing a great need for that during the course of the midday with all the special needs. Field trips and all of the kids that accompany their regular classmates, the general ed kids on field trips. So that large wheelchair bus is a good way to keep everybody together. And again, just based off conversations with the special ed and projecting as, you know, best we can on what's coming up for the new school year, we added a second, or excuse me, a third small bus with just a 30-capacity and no wheelchair. Because again, we're seeing these smaller groups of special ed kids traveling to different places during the course of the day for other services, and we're just trying to keep them together.
Are we stiffing and I put the borrowing fees in there so that we can get state aid on those fees? Not state aid so much as we can borrow the money and write it off over the five-year term. We don't get state aid on the cost of those fees. We tried, got rejected the last couple of years. So this is another way for us to kind of, instead of charging the fees someplace else in the budget, let's put it in transportation. And that's related directly to the cost of these vehicles. So when we borrow money, we have to pay fiscal advisors to help us put the bond together. We have to pay the bond attorney to put the paperwork together. And so we just felt that was a more prudent way to classify the expenses.
Are we not purchasing any Suburbans or replacing any, or is that on a different?
Nope. This is probably the first year in many years that we just don't need to.
Okay.
Yep. Most definitely will be next year in the rotation. We usually wind up one a year, two a year. But we've done a couple of years past, we're just to the point where we're not utilizing them as much as we used to. Still need, we still don't, we have a fleet of eight currently. So we're set with that. And those tend to last a little bit longer because they're not used as much, many miles, as a large bus, so they last a little bit longer. Again, with the bus purchase, we've spent a full year with that new crash mitigation system and the active warning. Drivers were a little bit apprehensive about it at first. You know, they were hearing hearsay that it does this and it does that. It actually does absolutely nothing if they're driving correctly, and they've figured that out now and they actually like it. We had our first incident that I was just made aware of, probably three, last Friday, where a driver was driving through the village, which is, again, we all know, very congested. She was distracted for a moment, and she didn't know why, that her bus came to a screeching halt, slammed on the brakes. And it was because a car shout-out shot right in front of her in front of Kenny's. So that is, you know, fortunately or unfortunately, however you want to look at it, already paid dividends that avoided an accident. And again, there's a look at the total where we're trying to meet our actual with what we budget.
You notice this one, though, we broke even last year. Or we talked about, we finished $100,000 short. We had to move some money into that budget code. So that was kind of like the canary in the coal mine for us. So we put another $100,000 in the fuel budget under material and supplies to try to build a little fund balance back into that budget if we can. Because if we experience an increased cost for fuel or whatever else happens, you know, where there's not a lot of flexibility in that budget to move money around. I try to have a little fund balance in every department so that each department can kind of exist on its own when different things change and I'm not taking money from somebody else. If I can avoid that, I would prefer. So, just to give you an idea where we are. So that's what this graph shows. Equipment's odd. Doesn't really tell you much.
No.
Tractor, we can see we have a little fund balance in there, budget to budget. Materials and supplies is kind of parallel each other. Again, this is back to us taking fund balance out where we could. OCS, that's a minor part of the budget.
Itemized breakdown of all the salaries.
We're anticipating a contract increase, so we did put a percent in there to try to cover us for the future. I'll leave that to the CSEA to try to figure out how much we put in there.
And again, two equipment codes, one associated with the building and the one associated with freestanding equipment, which could be a tire machine, computers for the building, things that travel with us.
It doesn't appear there's any real significant impact to the budget, though, based on the new facility. Is that?
No, everything that we needed was included in the building project.
Okay. So it looks like our operating cost for year-to-year isn't going to change much with that nice facility.
The only unknown is going to be the material and supplies for like custodial supplies and things like that. We're going from two bathrooms to seven. You know, we're going to have the second floor of that building is going to have a lot of training rooms and everything up there. So, you know, if I get 150 people and they're using the bathrooms, that's going to affect. We're going to have a full-time custodian in there. That's, so the payroll reflects that as opposed to a part-time one now. Because they're going to go clean an 11,000-square-foot building to one that's 40. So the office side is 10,000 square feet all by itself. So most of the cleaning in the bays is going to be done by the mechanics. We're going to have a floor machine out there to help them pick up the... And we bought those machinery and all that stuff in the building project budget.
But so for some of the, some of the things related to trainings and conferences, you're going to track that kind of separately so it's not necessarily inflating?
Well, it's ideal to put it, it's ideal to put it in the transportation facility because it gets 77% aid back.
Okay.
So the answer is no. Now, if it becomes a real issue, we're obviously going to keep track of what's going on. And we'll have, we have a new person who's going to be the full-time custodian over there, and she's going to be our kind of eyes and ears on the scene to tell us how it goes. So it's going to be based, some of this is going to be based on experience. And then, you know, we have a projection from the engineers and architects about what it's going to cost to heat and light the place. But, you know, we haven't lived in it. We haven't gone through four seasons. The lighting is going to be cheap. I think that there's two 20-amp circuits that power all the lights in the whole building. So, because they're all LEDs. So they're, it's just like the EPC, that's why we save so much money. Because all these, there's no longer fluorescent tubes, they're all LED tubes. So that part of it's going to be okay. It's how are we going to heat it? And air conditioning, the other end and that kind of stuff. So we're going to have to live with it for a year and see what happens. Another reason I like to put a little fund balance in there so we can protect us.
Now, do we think there's any shared services with like the village or the town or anything that can offset?
The town of Lyssander Highway Department is going to do an experiment either tomorrow or Thursday to drive a highway truck through both sides of the fuel island. Because their town council would like to abandon their fuel facility and start using ours. So that would be a win for us. And we charge them like five cents a gallon, or 5%, and that'd be like $4,000 a year. So we're not going to really make money on that. We would just pay for the EPA and the DEC inspection requirements and all that kind of stuff, and insurance. So we'd save them money in the long run. I also have talked with a couple of the town councilmen in the town of Lyssander and Van Buren. And once we're in the building and operating it, they want their entire town board to go through. So I'll take separate tours with the board from Lyssander and Van Buren. So they're interested in having a discussion publicly. And I'll probably end up going to one of their meetings at both towns to discuss perhaps an intermunicipal agreement where we would share those costs. So if our mechanics do some work on their equipment and maybe do some of their fleet maintenance, and maybe the town of Van Buren would have us do more in detail as opposed to the town of Lyssander, but we could do whatever they want. You know, we have the software set up to manage the parts, software set up to track labor, we could create bills. So just like a commercial establishment, all I'd like to do is if we could generate $30,000 or $40,000 worth of excess revenue, we could live in that building for free except for the, except for the debt service. So that means the heat and the lights and the insurance could be paid for out of that. So I'm not looking to really make money just to cover our overhead. And we have the same set of taxpayers. So it seems to me that we should be doing all we could to keep the cost down for all of us. So we've built it so that we can bring a fully-loaded highway truck in. We have a lift strong enough to hold it. We kind of changed the design of the fuel island so a highway truck could go in there with all those kind of things in mind. And now it's time, but we have an actual facility to go have those discussions. So I'm kind of psyched about that. And they approached me about having those talks and bringing their boards through. So that's a good thing. I mean, they're subjected to the tax cap just like we are.
But the village?
I think the village is interested, too. But, you know, they, they have their own, everybody has their own patterns and things, the way they like to do it. And I think each different group might buy different levels of service. Right now, we're selling fuel to the village, but we're not really getting any money for it because we store our salt in their salt barn. We borrow their loader in the 3:00 in the morning where we're filling our salt trucks. We're using their equipment. Now, our salt's delivered there and it's stacked next to their salt, but it's one hand washes the other. I fully intend to keep doing that. And they're going to have, they're definitely welcome to continue to buy fuel from us. So that would mean the fire district, town of Lyssander, and the village of Beeville buying at least gas and diesel from us. So we'll see. And we've got 10,000 gallons of regular fuel and 12,000 gallons of diesel in the new facility, which is twice as much as we have right now. Well, we can buy a whole tractor, tractor, trailer, as opposed to the shorter trucks that are not trailer. So the cost drops.
Tank wagons are more expensive.
Tank wagons. Yeah, tank wagons are more expensive. Right.
Absolutely.
So that's probably one of the things that's last on our list to get done because we're just trying to crank up to get into the building. And we may not make Christmas. Well, we're going to make the decision this Thursday, all because primarily the Verizon phone line. I can't get a CFO without the phone line going to the alarm system and the elevator. And all those systems has to be tested once the phone lines are in. And as of this morning at 8:00, there was no Verizon truck parked on the corner digging a hole. So I don't know what to tell you. We're probably going to end up in February because we need four straight days to move. I don't want to move or move when kids, we just cannot have the disruption. But we're almost, we're close. That's great. It looks really nice in there. So like Dana said, we'll be, again, fine-tuning this as we go along. Very similar to prior year budgets. There's not a lot happening there with, except of the fund balance and maybe the effect on material supplies. Still have the same staff size, you know, we're not hiring any different people except for the custodian.
Any other questions for Dana?
It'll be back next week, yeah.
It will be back next week. Thanks a lot, Dana.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Dana.
Jamie and Tim?
I just have a quick question on that timeline. A lot of, and what I've noticed is, you know, we have the first presentation one week, and then the following week, we have the follow-up. But generally, there's really not been much changed or no questions generated in that timeframe. Is it worth looking at at some point when those presentations are made and maybe spreading them out a little bit more? I don't know.
You know, we're going to, every single section of this budget moves around. And people who've been here for a while have heard me made this speech in the last decade. It really depends. We find out information at different times. And when we go into benefits and debt service, you're going to see why some of that is going to be so. So we're going to tell the board when changes occur.
Oh, right. Yeah, no, I know that. I, you know, just in terms of everybody, everybody's time is valuable. And if there's really not going to be anything within the next couple of weeks.
Just maybe that's something, because we adopt, or you adopted the budget calendar back in August, November.
Right, yeah.
So that might be a conversation that we have at cabinet moving forward if that's something the board would like us to look at for next year.
Right. I'm not necessarily proposing anything for right now.
But you are right. It's very rarely we have a question. But I think in fairness, everybody to ask a question publicly, you still have to have the opportunity. Many of these department things, like his department and facilities, and those just don't engender themselves to more follow-on questions because it really is what it is. If you go back and look at some of that history, we've been managing to keep the cost of transportation between five and six million for like 12 years. So it's going to go up, it's going to go down. It depends on who retires, depends on your collective bargaining agreement. So those things, like you see, you don't see a lot of swings because we really know what's going on there unless you have a huge special ed shift in population or some regulation changes. Like the year they made us change all our radios. You might have some crazy thing come out of the sky that we might spend $50,000 on. That would be different. But we would hear about that from one of our associations if something crazy like that was coming. So I hear you.
I get what you say, but it might be nice to change the order so that Dana doesn't have to sit here through all those presentations to come up and say, are there any questions? Nope, you can go home now. It's crazy to make people sit there that long when there's going to be fewer, no questions whatsoever.
Right.
So if they can come up before we do all those reports that we all struggle to stay awake through, then maybe they could go home earlier and catch Monday night football. I don't know. It just doesn't seem right to keep somebody sitting there.
You know, I hesitate, I hesitate because we are in the kid business, that we would put the kids' business in a last as opposed to transportation.
I think, though, in the, in the past, though, we have put the review first and then the leadership report. And there'll be less. I mean, obviously, tonight was compacting two meetings together, given the cancellation.
We've all sat here through hours of those reports on any night. And that only takes 10 minutes sometimes, or 10 seconds for that matter, if there aren't any questions.
I hear you.
Just to make everybody feel bad, we've got...
Just to make everybody feel bad, we've got winter weather advisory. So it'll be up at 3:00 AM.
Dana's just staying up tonight. He's just staying up.
He's going to be up anyway. That's right.
I will be up.
Thank you Dana.
Thanks a lot Dana.
That's why you're getting a shower in your new facility there. So you don't have to go home.
So we'll move on to the debt service. Jamie, I'll pull that up.
Can you pull that for me, please?
Do you want to?
I'll let Tiffany manage it for me. So let's just go right to the debt service screen where we have our nice stair step diagram. There we are. Tough to see up here, but it is on your computers and I like to use this because we talk about, uh, you know, the best methodology of managing your debt is watching when your debt's going to go away. So go back out a little bit, Tiffany, please. You see all the way on the rate in 26, 27, we're going to lose a million dollars for the debt service. So if I was to sit and go back four years prior, you know, before that date, you'd have to start planning on a project in 22, 23, you know, vote on it in 23, 24 and then build the next two years so your budget would, you could absorb that million dollars. Now, what does that million dollars mean? This is before we get to next year's budget. That million dollars means you could, on 30 years, it's $30 million. Okay, so if you took a look at the, the cost of the interest, you know, so you could build a building for, you know, probably 26, 28 million and the other two million would be the interest paid over the 30 years. So that gives you kind of an idea of, when I start talking in front of the future and say there's, you know, 90, 100 million dollars of opportunities there, that's the kind of thing I'm talking about. That's all I was trying to make a point by having that year out there. So let's go back to 2021. So actually we weren't too bad. We were within what 10 or 12,000 Tiffany of what we, our original calculation was 60 days ago. So if you go up on top, you see the yellow numbers, the 13, 1,340,000 and the 679. That assumes we're going to go to permanent financing with our bonds, you know, by the beginning, by July of 2020. So that means we'll get a full set of aid in the following year in 2020 and we'll pay the debt. So keep in mind that 85%, you have to keep the spending in the budget, but 85% of this is going to be paid by the state. And we're going to pay 15%. So remember we talked about last year how we missed it because that was when the bulk of the debt went away. So if you look over 1920, you know, we have another 680,000 that wasn't appeared, didn't appear in last year. That's the bump because we weren't able to get our building project finished. Now, the 1.3 million, we can only carry a band for a year without paying interest, interest in the principal. So we got to pay 1.3 million this year and then we're going to get, we're going to pay the full, almost 2 million next year, but we're going to 85% aid on that. So that's what this sheet shows you. The bottom block is made up of a group of five-year payments and that really, uh, represents if I'm going to borrow 1.2 million to buy 11 buses like he wants to do in, uh, like we want to do in next year, we're going to have the same, so the same structure will bill up here and you'll start paying 265 as the next chunk of that next five-year loan. So we're always paying five, we're always making five payments a year on different bus groupings, but because of the state caused this, well, when I started 19 years ago, that's when they changed the rule. So they, they used to, if you bought a million dollars of the buses, they'd give you your 78% in the, that year when you bought them in aid. And you'd only, you pay your local share right away. Well, then they were in a cash flow crunch 18 and 19 years ago. So the state, I'm talking about the state. So they said, okay, we'll pay you, you can get 20% of your aid a year for five years. So what happened, every single district in the state went to five-year bonds for their stuff and they, they're trying to ma, match the money outflow with the revenue coming in. So if I'm only going to get 20%, then that means I'm going to get 20%. So I got to pay $800,000 out of my district's hide in order to buy those buses and I'm only going to get $200,000 back. So all of us looked at that and said, well, I know how to fix that. We'll just match the aid stream to the cost of the bond. So that's what that reflects down below. So our, our increase from the prior year is going to go from, uh, almost 6 million to 6.693. And the primary cause of it is the 30, $30 million we're going to borrow permanently for the bus garage and the roofs and the kitchen at the high school. Divided up into two chunks. Any questions about that? This, we're not quite sure how it's going to go yet because we wait, we're going to wait and see what the aid numbers are. And later we'll have a discussion with the board later under the revenue. We'll talk about how much aid we're going to, once the governor's budget comes out, exactly how much aid we're going to get for our bonds. That's all part of that state aid picture and we usually see that in January. Can we go to the benef, uh, benefits now, please? Yeah, let's go to the detail. It's tough to read on this, but, uh, so we're making estimates on these benefits right now because, uh, like the workers comp consortium has not set their limit yet. So we just put an estimated increase. The ERS and TRS, we've gotten estimates, but that's not final either. And that's based on our cost of our payroll. So a good way of thumb is to look at it as if, if we're paying 40 million in teacher salaries and they raise the cost 1%, that's $400,000. So when you see the changes in the newspaper or something like that, they'll give you an idea. So you can get big swings in these based on what the final rate ends up being. Unemployment insurance, uh, we kind of just self-fund that. Workers comp, we think it's going to go down because we've had some really good experience ratings the last few years. I'm on the executive committee for that. So I, I'm shading it. We're going to more advantageous. Medical insurance, you know, they're telling us it's going to be 8%. So 8% is in there above our current year. Keep in mind that the medical insurance, we kind of kept it flat. There is some fund balance in there from year to year. Dental insurance is about the same. So you can see the biggest growth right now, it looks like in our total budget is on the benefit side. And that's just, it's going to go from 29 million and then 29.8 and now we're looking at 31.5. And once we get the final numbers from the consortium we belong to, then we'll modify this and it will tell you how much fund balance is in there. Remember last year we put some fund balance. I, I gave the board a complete analysis of where we, I think we got about $2.5 million of the fund balance on the budgeted side in our current year. And we'll do the same kind of report and calculation for you for 2021, once the smoke cleared, we decide where we are. So these are numbers that are going to move around more than transportation because of the unknowns at this point. But you know, in fairness to all of us, we just got to put a number on it. This is our best shot. It is nice going to the consortium. It kind of takes the risk. If they say 8%, that's what it's going to be. We don't have to put as much fund balance in there as we used to, to protect ourselves. So we're budgeting a little tighter. We'll see. That's our challenge. You know, if we, if we only raise a million dollars or 1.2 million in our tax cap, you know, and our cost rise 3%, $3 million, you know, we got to think about what you're going to do. Do we use some more fund balance? Cut something? We'll have those. So we're a long way away from April when you have to approve this. So we'll, this will be much, really fine tuned by the time we get there. We're doing our, uh, just so you know how the schedule's going, we're working on our salaries right now and the next week or so. I'll be giving Joe the complete analysis of all of his instructional salaries by person who's in the code. So we're going to be able to go person by person by FTE and see who's where. And just like we had to move some of that money around on the transfers, you know, sometimes those people leave and the person gets hired. Somebody moves building to building, grade to grade. That kind of messes us up. But all it can do is take a snapshot in December of every year because most of the hiring has been done unless a special ed child moves in. Your classes for the year are fixed. Any questions on that so far? And again, we'll tell you when something happens. Try to. Thank you.
Yep. Uh, first reading textbook. Uh, this will be on for the next, uh, meeting for approval. This is ninth grade English. It is a text that, that we actually have, um, both of the regular version is, and we're looking to purchase the graphic novel portion of that. Questions? Trip request, can you go on? Uh, boys varsity, uh, baseball team, a trip that they've, uh, participated in for the last couple of years. This happens to fall all over. This year's April break, so there will be no, uh, school time missed for this event. Questions? And the final trip request is for Baker High School orchestra band students to participate in the senior high area all-state. Again, this is typical this time of year. And the reason it's coming to the board is because of the overnight, uh, for the students.
I just have something to say about that one or a question. There's just an inconsistency on, on this, I think. For the lodging, it says that it's being paid by the student, I believe. See lodging, it says actually it's being paid by the district and the table, but the text down below says that, uh, lodging will be paid by students.
That should not be the case because we agreed a couple of years ago to participate, that any student participating in a, um, representing the district for these, um, events, it would be covered by the district.
Oh, I'm not questioning whether we do it or not, just that both sections are consistent.
Yep.
I think we compared this to state competition in sports and since we cover the athletes going to states, whether it's nice for our federation that we would do this music too. So it should be covered.
We'll follow up for correction on the final reading.
Yeah, it looks like it just, the bottom part just needs to be switched to the district.
Yep. Any other questions? Okay, we'll get that checked.
Resolved that the Board of Education approved the Bolnsville Central School District Policy Series. 5,000, 7,000, 8,000 reviewed, revised pursuant to the attached, do I have a motion? Jim, Jeff? Any questions? All those in favor? Opposed? Carried 8-0. Resolved that the Board of Education approved the instructional technologies lease contract between the Bolnsville Central School District and LCMBOSIS in the amount of 865,000 pursuant to the attached motion. Kim, Jeff? Any questions? Yep.
Yeah, this is for next year. So we do it this early so that it can go to the BOSIS board and they approve it. Then it has to go to SED for approval, then it comes back. So this is our technology lease that Rock, that RJ does every year.
All those in favor? Opposed? Carried 8-0. Resolved that the Board of Education amend the district's 403B retirement plan regarding part-time employees eligibility and allow James J. Rodems as Assistant Superintendent for Management Services to sign the amendment on behalf of the district pursuant to the attached. Do I have a motion? Matt, Kim? Jamie?
This is a state, a legal requirement now. So legislation changed and our vendor, uh, Omni, which does the 403B management for us is, we have to legally adopt this amendment so they can continue to enforce the thing properly. That's what we pay them for annually.
All those in favor? Opposed? Carried 8-0. Resolved that the Board of Education approved the agreement between the Bolnsville Central School District and the Board of Trustees of the Village of Bolnsville for the provision of two police officers as school resource officers for the 2019, 2020 school year pursuant to the attached. Do I have a motion? Jeff, second? Matt?
Again, this has been vetted by our attorneys. It's kind of versions have gone back and forth between the village and ourselves and we approved this. I'll email the chief tomorrow and tell him, you know, we're all set. Our board approved it and he can get his board to approve it and then we'll all sign it.
Questions? All those in favor? Opposed? Carried 8-0. Resolved that the Board of Education approved the disposal of surplus instructional materials pursuant to the attached motion. Jeff? Matt, second? Questions? All in favor? Opposed? Carried 8-0. New course, uh, I just went back down. Resolved that the Board of Education approved the new course proposal of global environment SUNY ESF in a high school for Charles W. Baker High School for grade levels 10, 11, and 12 pursuant to the attached motion. Jim, second? Jeff? Questions? All those in favor? Opposed? Carried 8-0. Resolved that the Board of Education approved the affidavits of collection from the August 2019 tax levy pursuant to the attached, do I have a motion? Kim, Jeff? Questions? Jamie?
Uh, this, uh, Tiffany and I were talking, we thought it would be appropriate every year to have the board see these forms. In years past, I've just submitted them, you know, and, and to count in the way, but I think it's interesting for everybody to see what was collected and what wasn't collected. This is similar to a prior year, non-collected. It's maybe a hundred thousand dollars higher, but you know, our, our taxes went up, you know, 1.2 million. So you would think it'd be proportional as you go through the year. So. Now, what happens with these forms is I'll get Joan to sign them and we'll, we'll, uh, submit them to the county. The county already has these numbers and the county will make us whole and they will take, they will chase down the non-payers. So the county, in this county, they assume their risk.
Or eventually take it over after a period of time.
Pardon?
Or eventually take the property over after a period of time.
That's correct.
Yeah.
All those in favor? Opposed? Carried 8-0. Resolved that the board, that the Bolnsville Central School District credit card limit be increased to $100,000 and the credit cards be authorized for 2019, 2020 pursuant to the attached. Do I have a motion? Jim? Second? Jeff? Questions? All those in favor? Opposed? Carried 8-0. Resolved that the Board of Education award contracts for phase one of the safety and security project to RJ Thomas Company Incorporated, general contractor in the amount of, is that 388,800? And Patricia Electric Incorporated Electrical Contract in the amount of 146,200 pursuant to the attached contract awarded contingent upon receipt of proper bonding and insurance certifications, including review and approved by district's legal and insurance counsel and other required documents from the successful bidder. Do I have a motion?
One, one correction, it's SJ Thomas, not RJ Thomas. I think when I was typing it, I was on the phone with RJ or got a phone call. That's the only reason I can think I did that transposition. Oh yeah, I talked to RJ. So sorry, it's SJ Thomas.
As amended to SJ Thomas. Yeah. Yeah. Any questions? All those in favor? Oh, I didn't get moved a second. Yeah, motion? Kim and, uh, Kim and Jim? Kim and Jim? All those in favor? Opposed? Carried 8-0. Board roundtable?
I just have one question. I have, I have one question and you don't even need to give information today. I was just curious. You mentioned the Vocera pilot or RJ mentioned the Vocera pilot. Um, I know that there had been discussion about Vocera and the cost and different things. So just an update at some point in time, not now, please.
So any, any other thing for, uh, Board Roundtable? I know Matt had mentioned talking about committees, but I think we have plenty of time to talk about committees and committee structure down the road. So if we're good with that.
Yeah, we probably need to, um, wait until policy committee. I'm going to email Matt that one policy about the policy development and how it's defined in our policy before we can proceed with that section for the manual.
Well, I, we got plenty of time. Yeah, we have plenty of time to do that till the end of the year. So, um, if there's nothing else? You need a motion to go into executive session? Jeff, did you move? Second? Matt? All those in favor? Opposed? Carried 8-0?